Great, I'd like to welcome everyone to the January 15th regular meeting of the Nishoba Regional School Committee. At this time, those who are so inclined may stand by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I will call for citizens' comments. A reminder that school committee meetings are business meetings held in public, not public meetings. This is not an opportunity for discussion, however. I will follow up with the speaker after the meeting as need be. Comments should pertain to agenda items or topics that are within the purview or authority of the school committee. We allow a maximum of three minutes, and comments are made through the chair. Improper conduct and remarks are not allowed. If a speaker persists in such behavior, the chair will terminate the speaker's privilege of address and order them to leave. The school committee may prohibit only improper conduct speech on topics which are not within the school committee's purview. And improper conduct generally includes obscenities, fighting words, or threats. So if you are going to share some comments with us, please let us know your name and the town you're from and the topic you'll be addressing. So are there any citizens' comments? Yes? Hi.
Okay, I'm Jenny Blount. I live in Stowe. And the topic I wanted to address was special education, update on special education. Our younger daughter, who's now in kindergarten at the center school, has been receiving special ed services through the district for two and a half years now. We feel incredibly lucky that she has the support of some wonderfully kind and professional teachers, aides, and therapists. Our experience, however, has had its share of conflicts and struggles to ensure that our daughter is getting what she needs to be successful. This includes placement in the appropriate setting and sufficient support within that setting, among other things. We've heard praise for the special education programming that the school committee has agreed to fund over the last few years. It is streamlined with each elementary and middle school offering a particular program to students with a particular type of need, and it has saved the district money. There has been little exploration of the immense drawbacks of this kind of structure, however, and there are many drawbacks. The rigidity of allowing the district's programming to determine placement instead of it being a true team decision based on the child's individual needs. Tracking students into a particular path as early as preschool and kindergarten. Outdated approaches to separately educating students with disabilities, like the travel times for students. The removal of students from schools where they would have the support of their neighbors and siblings. The burden that this places on families and the special ed administration that is resistant to any outside expertise or input that does not line up with the programming that's already in place. I have deep concerns for the ways in which this newly streamlined programming creates problems with compliance under special ed law and includes components such as substantially separate classes, which happen to fly in the face of current special ed research and best practices. Given the many drawbacks of this structure, we'd hope that the school committee would take a hard look at the programming and demand data, success metrics, and goals. Is the programming truly saving the district money? Or is it creating more costly legal battles as parents are put in the position of having to fight for what's best for their children? Are the professionals working within these programs qualified, well-trained, and handling a manageable caseload? Personally, I've seen specialists who seem overextended and spread thin across multiple buildings and highly qualified special educators who work with perhaps a total of two students. I would hope that the school committee would take a close look at whether the district's most valuable resource, its caring, dedicated educators, is being used in a way that most benefits all students. If we want Nishoba to be a school system that provides authentic educational opportunities for all children, that are based in research and best practices, and that contribute to truly inclusive communities where neurodiversity is celebrated and everyone is embraced, then we're going to need to look beyond streamlined programming and surface-level cost savings. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
My name's Sarah Sloan. I'm also from Stowe, and I guess I would echo what she said in various areas. Being a frustrated parent of a special education student myself, just a couple of things I wanted to highlight, based on the slides for today's program. If 18.5% of our children are on IEPs and 6% are on 504s, but yet the school committee only hears about special ed programs once a year, for something that impacts such a large percentage of our students, I think is inadequate. And I guess I would request you all to think about maybe increasing the frequency and the depth with which you look into our special education programs. My frustration stems from the handling of dyslexic students. Based on latest scientific estimates, between 330 and 700 dyslexic students exist in our school district. It's estimated that 10% to 20% of children are dyslexic in some capacity. This is not an insignificant number, and as best I can tell, we have no systematic approach for addressing that common occurrence of a specific... I don't want to call it a disability, but I think it's categorized as specific learning disability, but it's really a learning difference. We have some of the best resources in the state, nationally and globally, expertise in dyslexia, and I would hope that our district would take advantage of that proximity to that expertise and make sure that all of our teachers are highly trained in recognizing this. Additionally, last year, the state legislature passed a bill requiring screening and intervention in the area of dyslexia, and I would love to know, and maybe it's in the program tonight and it just wasn't in the slides, but I would love to know how that's being implemented in our district. Last but not least, and this kind of goes to what the previous speaker said, it's incredibly disheartening to have to continually fight for your child's interventions and programming that is appropriate. And in particular, in the arena of dyslexia here and see from parents who have dyslexic kids of the need to test and retest and pay for outside testing to the tune of thousands of dollars just to convince the district as to what needs to be done and the services that need to be rendered for their child. In addition, having to hire an advocate or even take...
Please excuse me. You have three minutes, but please finish your thought.
Yeah, that's my last thought. But the notion that we have to pay for outside legal help and advocacy is also disheartening.
Thank you. Other? Yes?
All right. Kim Carn from Stowe. So again, talking to special education and the transparency within the district. Hold on a second, because apparently I scrolled down. In today's highly connected world, it is incredibly important to establish trust. One of the main contributors to trust is creating a culture of transparency. I feel that transparency and communication overall have been a strong area of opportunity in special education within our district. With testing standards and methods of administration constantly changing, programs being added and removed from the special education catalog with varying levels of inclusion across those programs, and changes in service providers whose qualifications vary based on the program, it's increasingly difficult for parents to navigate what is going on and therefore to make informed decisions on behalf of our children. How can we, as parents, determine if a placement is correct if we cannot access the description of the program or the success metrics of that program? How can we, as parents, understand what services may best benefit our child without understanding the types of services that are even available within the district? How can we, as parents, anticipate what will be the focus for our children and in our school district without being able to access the plan for special education on a yearly basis? How can we, as parents, be advocates for our children? The short answer is that we can't. We can't without being willing to dig. No parent should have to spend their valuable time digging for information when it can be easily provided by the district. Busy parents need immediate access to plans to prepare for the upcoming school year. I think this problem has a simple and easy solution. Nishoba has been updating their website for the last year. With the newly updated website, we could and should post information to the pupil and personnel services page. This information can include budget and expenditures or links to the school committee budget and expenditures, linking to radar reporting, information on the programs, specifically RISE, Connections, Links, Friends, et cetera, and the associated services within those programs, which I know we're working on, and then the special education yearly plan, which I think will really help parents in the district to know where we're planning to go going forward. Getting access to these files will inform important decisions that benefit the children receiving services in our district. In order for transparency to happen, the administrative leadership has to buy into the value of connectivity. Based on our current district improvement plan, our administration already understands the importance of connectivity and transparency. The DIP states that a core value of family and community engagement is important, and I feel we're falling short on that. There seems to be a disconnect between the district and the community in regards to special education, and I think that's the result of lack of transparency. My ask today of the school committee and of the administration is that we ensure that this core value is realized in the field of special education by improving our level of transparency across the district. When there is transparency, there is understanding and trust. All of these terms are terms that I hope to see defined in Nishoba Regional School District going forward.
Thank you. Any other comments? Sorry, I want to make sure this doesn't go off. Thank you very much. Before we get going, I want to let folks know that Steve Cullinan is scheduled to speak later in the agenda about the Program of Studies, but he is on his way to a wrestling meet and he wants to go there, so I told him that as soon as he comes in, he can do his presentation and then go see the kids. Okay. So I have an update from Tim Norris, who is conducting the investigation. So the update for today states, "I am writing to provide an update on the investigation. After a hiatus due to the Christmas New Year holiday during which I was effectively unable to reach and meet the witnesses I sought to interview due to their unavailability, I was unfortunately called out of town to attend to death in my family. Upon returning, I have conducted additional interviews, and other than tying up some loose ends, asking some follow-up questions, and reviewing some additional documents I have collected, I believe I have completed the bulk of the investigatory interviews. I believe I am about a week away from completing the investigatory work and another week or so after that away from being able to complete a report. At this point, I would like to make plans to discuss the investigation with designated members of the committee and decide on the most appropriate way to report my findings." So this will be posted, this update will be posted. And back in December, when we read the first update, right before Thanksgiving, Elaine and I met with Tim. We are the designated people from the school committee who will follow up with him, and so until we do that, we have nothing more to report, but we will keep you posted as we need to. Any questions? Okay. So a few things that I have. In framing this next bit, I had to reflect upon the fact that when we had our workshop in June, I shared that in the five years I've been on the committee, there have been 12 new members of the committee. That might sound like a bad thing, but I think it's a good thing because it provides us with new sets of eyes who are looking at our roles and responsibilities and asking questions about them. And it's because of this that we have the school committee manual and a communication plan. And now, thanks to Mary, a reminder of our responsibility to review the regional agreement with regard to membership. This was supposed to be done every five years, but it has not been done in at least 20 years to the best of anyone's recollection. So we will be reviewing the regional agreement as it pertains to school committee membership. Mary has done some preliminary work and will present at the meeting on January 29th. I will send you all the regional agreement and the associated statute, but I want to thank Mary for bringing this into focus and for organizing the information to present to the committee. So it'll be on our next agenda, and I will try to know where to marry at that point. Upcoming agenda items, you may have noticed on our planning calendar that there are things... Oh, there he is, hi! Come on! I said I'm presenting the regularly scheduled program for you. No, 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 no. You should be at that wrestling match with the kids.
And I argued after that too, so...
Well, you're not here tonight, so...
I apologize, I didn't realize that I was tonight.
Oh, no, 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 no. Steve Cullinan, who is the acting principal at the high school, and he's going to talk to us about the Program of Studies.
Program of Studies, essentially, we're going to keep exactly the same as it was last year. We're not going to change anything on it. There's some grammatical stuff that we're going to change, but everything else is, all the classes are going to stay exactly the same. We figured that made the most sense based on what's been going on.
Sure.
Next year, there may be some more changes, but we'll see how that goes when it happens.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Steve?
Thank you. I'm sorry.
No, 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 thank you. I appreciate you coming by, but I'd rather see you at the table. Well, I won't see you, but I'd rather know that you're... Do you have a question, Mary?
The only thing is that you may not know all of us, and we may not know you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I just, I just thought maybe we could introduce us.
Glad to have you on this committee, because I never think of that stuff.
Anyway, it's been 28 years, you guys change all the time.
Were you here when I said over the last five years, there have been 12 new people?
I was not here at that point. I was trying to get in here at that point.
Okay, all right. So we will... Do you know Alita?
I know Alita.
Okay. So, Alita.
My name is Leah, and my son is at the high school.
Okay.
And she's from Stowe.
Steve Rubenstein.
Yep, me, yeah. I heard you. You guys are...
Mary McCarthy, Bolton, Rep.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Anyway, Ms. Joseph, please sit up from Lancaster.
Nice to meet you.
My co-adj, I'm from Bolton.
How do you do?
Good.
All right. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much, Steve.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Do you need to approve anything?
We need to vote on that, don't we?
I was going to say, I think that you need to take a vote, just...
Okay.
I think that there should be a motion written.
Okay, yep. I'm going to let Elaine handle this.
I'm going to move to approve the 2028-2021 NRHS Program of Studies with no changes from the 2019-2020 program.
Can I have a second, please? A second, Phil? Okay. All in favor? opposed? All right. Thank you very... Mary, again, thank you for giving that. All right. So when you look at our planning calendar in the so-called parking lot, there are a number of items that we have asked to have put on the agenda. So what I'd like to do between now and the next meeting is sort of send out a survey to you folks so that we can... I want to see how you would like to see those items prioritized. As I said, that the next meeting, we're going to talk about the membership and the regional agreement, but there were some other things. And so based on the feedback I get from you folks, we'll start to plug things in so we get to everything. I've asked Joseph Leeson to take my place on the negotiations committee, and he has graciously agreed, and he will join Steve and Mary on the negotiations committee. And also, Don Low is going to represent the three towns. Thanks again, Don. He did it the last time, and he did such a good job that he's back. And the first meeting for that committee is scheduled for Thursday, February 6th. And then I want to announce that... I'm sorry.
You already know that I won't be back.
I will. And I think, Anne Marie, correct me if I'm wrong, that first meeting basically sets the ground rules, and then we set a couple of meetings. Is that correct?
For the most part, that's usually what happens, yes.
Okay. But we're not going to make any tough decisions without you there. So if you have any input for the ground rules, if you could send, so Steve could have a look before, that would be great. I know everybody's eager to get started. I will not be at the meeting on January 29th, and so Elaine is going to chair that meeting. We will need five people for a quorum, so if you are thinking that you might not be here, you need to let me know or Elaine and Elaine know, because we can't have a meeting without five people. Okay? Any questions? Joseph?
It's not really a question, it's more a comment. And I'm happy to serve on the negotiation committee at your request.
Thank you.
But I do want to bring up one point, and I mainly bring up this point not for your ratification, but for their ratification. And part of the reason that I agreed to do that, and not that I wouldn't do it anyways, but I thought it was important that I do it, because Mr. Rubenstein and Ms. McCarthy, they're both from Bolton and Stowe, we wouldn't have had a Lancaster rep on the committee.
Right.
The subcommittee, I should say. And the reason I bring this up is, is that we're now in January of 2020, and we in Lancaster are still looking for another representative, and it would be really helpful if there's anybody out there that is willing to serve. You're only going to be serving from basically the end of January to May at this point.
That's correct.
Until I think Ms. Crossman's term, is it?
Yes, just the finish for term off.
Yeah, finish the term off. So if anybody's out there, I mean, I've gone before, as I said, I went before the select board in Lancaster and made the same plea, but, you know, my pleas fall on my debt for years.
Yeah, people see me coming in, they walk the other way because they know what I'm going to ask. And, but yeah, I think, yes, Mary?
I just want to echo what Joe said, because when it comes to a quorum, we still have five, and we only have, we're missing one member, but more than that. You know, whereas in Bolton, we would love to have one more representative, and we're looking to have enough population in the town to warrant that, but Lancaster does have that. And so we miss the person, the other, whoever that is. And they don't have to run for this, the selectmen, they could save their interest, and their reasoning would be reviewed by the selectmen and by the Lancaster members, and then chances are, they would be on the committee with us. So I just want to echo that we would really like to have somebody from Lancaster.
Sure, thank you. All right. Yeah, hopefully you'll have taken, especially I like the point that it's a very short commitment from January to May.
And mispronounced her name, I'm sorry, it's Crossman, not Crossman, I'm sorry about that.
Oh, okay, nope.
My son will watch, and he'll correct me, so thank you.
Okay, thanks, Joseph. Okay, and so now we're going to have the student representative report, and we have a new feature this time, actually we're able to predict it, so that's super.
So, starting top left, that is Mr. O'Shea, the Mary Rollinson principal, and that was before break at the annual holiday sing-along. I'd love to point out the amazing suit that he is wearing. And so the annual sing-along is just something really fun for the students all to get together right before the break starts. And then at Hail, last Friday, pictured above, there was a volleyball tournament schoolwide, so that picture is the winning teams. There was also Students of the Month that were named just five days ago. So every month, Hail chooses two students from each grade for that honor. And then tonight is the Band and Choir Winter Concert, which is at 7:00.
Are you missing, you're not missing that, are you? That's where you should be. No, it's now. No, I'm sorry to interrupt, I'll interrupt when you're done. Go ahead, finish.
And then, so Luther Burbank. Two nights at 6:00 was the Middle School Matters Parent/Teacher Book Study. And then last week, the LBMS Choir sang the National Anthem of the Worcester Railers game. I think that's their second or third year doing that, so that's pretty cool. And then the eighth grade team is looking for a registered nurse to accompany them on their Washington DC trip in May. So that's not for a while, but they are putting that search out. Florence Sawyer School, they had their winter band and choir concert last week, and the lip sync rehearsals are underway, and the show will be on February 28th at 7:00. Tomorrow, there is a geography bee and a basketball game versus Marlboro. At the high school, there's a wrestling match, and boys hockey is playing in Westboro. The musical is also underway and making immense strides with the help of a new music director and a phenomenal cast, so it's really cool. There is a boys' and girls' basketball game this week as well. Currently, they are 6-2, and hockey is 4-3 in total overall. Midterms start next week, so every day, the high school has late starts, two exams, and a review period every day.
Very good. Thank you, Ivy.
Of course.
Okay. I just want to get back to the scheduling. I remember last year when we were putting together the school calendar, and maybe it just needs to be a reminder for the schools as they're scheduling things to look at. Our school committee calendar is published way ahead of time, to please avoid, I'm sorry you're missing your child's...
Oh, don't worry.
No, I do, because I, you should be there, but it's...
It's being videotaped. We thought about livestreaming it, but...
I see. I'd be just trash in front of a meeting, but... So if you could make a note of that.
Yeah, I think that we try to do our very best. I just think that we pack so much in, sometimes it's unavoidable. I mean, we definitely take that into account, though. I just would put that out there.
Okay. So, but next year, we'll try harder. Thank you.
I just want you to know it's on our radar, that's all.
No, no, that's, and I appreciate that. Okay, so we have the superintendent's report.
So a couple of quick things. The first item is with regards to the calendar creation for 2021. Our infamous calendar committee is about ready to start to do its work. We're in the process of sending out a short survey, I think it may even have gone out, I believe I saw it go out today, a short survey to parents to just ask them for feedback for purposes with regards to the professional development afternoons. And one of the reasons we're doing that is because as we took a look at our own data, we weren't seeing some of the changes we were hoping to see, and so it seems to us that we might as well put it back to the Friday, because we weren't seeing a huge growth for going to the Wednesdays. So, but we didn't want to do that without letting our parents have some input. I suspect the parents would prefer us to go back to Fridays, so I'm not anticipating that we'll have problems, but we'll take a look at the data and see if they really, really want us to do Wednesdays and want us to do that. So the committee will likely support a return to all Fridays for professional development. The other thing too, Joe, I remember that you had made the suggestion, could we see if we could get the DCU Center for a five-year period? And so we did go after that. And we're not able right now to secure five years, but we've secured two, and that's hugely helpful for us, and we're on deck for the next three. And so I would want you to know that we followed up on your suggestion, and so with that, one of the things that we had talked about is can we create a two-year calendar? And so I think that the committee is going to work very hard this year to try to create a two-year calendar, because one of the things that we're always waiting for, of course, is grant. And so now that that's secured, we're hoping that they can go back and do this. So that's what we're hoping to do. Mosquito Committee, the Bolton town, a town of Bolton has established a mosquito committee, and we met yesterday morning at 9:00. We'll be meeting again Tuesday morning next week. They're having a speaker come in. You'll recall that, you know, we had some definite issues last year, and I think that Bolton is looking, just as our other communities are too, at trying to be pro act with... Bolton is looking, just as our other communities are too, at trying to be proactive with this, taking a look at being both proactive and reactive. And so I think from the school's perspective, we felt that what we did last year in our school grounds worked very effectively, so we'll probably want to continue along that same path. And Rob can certainly speak more eloquently than I can on that, but for what we felt we did, we felt it worked very effectively. And I think when we talk about being proactive too, I think if you recall, poor Tony, Rich had to do all the rescheduling of all of those games, and that was, that was just a nightmare. So I think that, you know, by thinking ahead, being proactive, I'm hoping that this will streamline our process. Town administrators met, we try to meet once a month if we can as a group, doesn't always work, but we try to do that. The town administrators, they can always call and connect anyway, and sometimes I very often will go if I'm seeking advice from one of them outside of these meetings. So we had a regular meeting. We talked about a couple of things, of course, the budget rules is one of the big things right now that we're always looking for. And I've said this before, we have a flavor of where we need to land in our budget process. So, you know, we had a little bit of discussion on that, a little bit of discussion on some of the capital items, a number of other miscellaneous topics, and MSBA, of course. And so I'm going to speak a little bit more about the MSBA potential as we're looking further down on our program tonight, so I'll fill you in a little bit more on that when we get to that. Tri-Town meeting, we want to thank Bolton for hosting our recent Tri-Town meeting, and this is our first meeting after many, many months, almost two years worth, to be honest. We appreciate the questions and the flow of conversation, and we're looking to meet again in February. And that's Tri-Town. And Dr. McGuire is going to talk about district PD planning and the high school vision.
Great. With the turn of the calendar to 2020, the Department of Teaching and Learning is in full planning mode for our District Day of Professional Development and Professional Learning on March 6th, Friday, March 6th, 2020. We invite all to attend. Like last year, we will be hosting a variety of innovative showcases, workshops throughout the entire day. We'll be doing a keynote speech with Tony Wagner, who's the author of Creating Innovators. He'll be joining us for a keynote speech in the morning. We'll also be doing a variety of showcases in both gymnasiums on innovation and social emotional learning. So far, we have about 26 applications from outside people and internal individuals to present a number of.
Fun from New York.
Yeah, and recently, we've got a group coming in from New York to visit with us, and also going to be presenting a workshop on digital learning. So we're going to have some workshops too in the morning, and then break it up with some lunch, and then some workshops in the afternoon. So we're really excited about the number of applications that have come in, we're really excited about the number of showcases, we're doing a lot of community outreach too, because this year's theme is entitled "Community of Innovators." And I'm also excited that we've solidified next year's speaker as of today. So as we focus on social emotional learning, we've got a fantastic speaker already lined up and committed for next year. So please mark your calendars for March 6th this year for our District Day of Professional Learning.
And I think we had a number of school committee members stop in last year too. So please make sure that you do mark them on the calendar. We have opened it up to other school districts as well, and we've got a number of other school districts who have already earmarked the date and will be joining us that day. So please don't hesitate to reach out to your school districts and see if you, that they'd like you to come and join us.
Can we know who's coming next year? Or is it a surprise? Is it, have you been doing a reveal later on in the program?
There isn't a reveal later on in this program, but.
All right.
We're very excited about, we are very excited about the speaker, and short of landing on probably his front doorstep, I finally solidify.
I just wanted to know, I can wait.
Yeah, I think we'll just have you just wait a little bit longer, but we're super excited about it.
But it ties into our theme, our two-year theme in the dip of social emotional learning and.
He's a perfect speaker for us.
Leading individuals on SEL.
Thank you. Okay, good.
The next piece is around high school visioning. As a result of our invitation to the MSBA process, we have put together a small team of individuals at the high school and with the Department of Teaching and Learning to work with Jacob Foster. Jacob's a leader in STEM education as well as educational visioning to begin crafting our vision for our new high, our potentially our new high school moving forward. So far, we've held two meetings to begin discussion and planning around this exciting process that's ahead for our high school and Ashoka community as a whole. Jacob will be attending some high school faculty meetings this month particularly, and meeting with the staff and spending some time, particularly tomorrow, all day within the high school community to get a sense of the feel of the faculty, the students, and the program that we have. So we're really looking forward to sharing more as this process unfolds for us, that this visioning process is just beginning to unfold with Jake as the lead for us. So we're really excited about that process as well.
And I just want to, this is not to be a downer, I'm not being Debbie Downer here, but I want to put out there that we are not, we are not saying that we are getting a new high school, I just want to put that out there again, please, because that's not necessarily where we're going to head or where we're going to land, but we have to do a visioning process and create an educational plan. And so this is part of that process, and wherever it lands is wherever it lands, we understand that, but we're doing the legwork for it right now.
And it's giving us a great opportunity to get over to the high school and, you know, a lot of the teachers and the faculty.
It's exciting.
And take a look at the space and the vision for teaching and learning over there, so.
Super. That's it. Thank you. Questions for Todd?
No, not for Todd, just a question for, did we, did we set a date for the next Tri-Town? Was there a date in place?
I think we did.
I think we did.
First Wednesday in March.
Oh, is it the first Wednesday in March? Is that what it was? My apologies. I think I put it in February, but yes, you're right.
First Wednesday in March, okay. Were you doing that Bolton?
I know, I think it's Lancaster this time.
Oh, that's right. Okay.
March 4th.
Yeah, March 4th, 7:00, Lancaster Prescott Building.
Through you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Low.
Okay. Any other questions for Brooke or for Todd? All right. Without further ado, we're going to learn about the advisory program at the Burbank School. Soon as you get in, I'm going to move my chair, so we'll scoot away.
So we're super excited to present to the school committee this evening. I'd like to introduce four students from Luther Burbank who are going to talk to for a little bit about advisory at our school. So we have Alyssa Toronto, Andrew Allison, Harry Wells, and Gianna Poole, and they're all eighth graders. And this is their amazing teacher, Mrs. Sullivan, one of their amazing teachers, I should say. And Mrs. Sullivan's been deeply involved in our advisory work at Luther Burbank and been instrumental in our growth moving forward. So they're here to talk to you for a little bit about advisory, and Alyssa's going to kick it off.
Thank you, Mrs. Friend, and I would like to thank the school committee for having us here tonight. And tonight, we are excited to talk about advisory at the Luther Burbank Middle School. So what is advisory? Advisory is a fun part of our school day. Our whole school has had advisory for about four years now, and the kids have absolutely loved it, and we've heard great responses from them. And during advisory, we meet in small groups with peers and a teacher or an advisor, and we meet two times in a six-day cycle to roughly 20 to 25 minutes. So advisory is a fun way to get together and separate from class time, so students can relax and share what is on your mind. You can be as open as you want, and it's a place where you can be honest, where you can be honest and share in a safe environment, so you feel very comfortable where you are. This is a way to bring many students together and possibly create new friendships they probably would have never thought to have before. And with the help of your peers and your companions, along with your advisor, you can have a great time. Here are a couple of pictures of the advisory groups. They are very small, but consist of our amazing eighth-grade students and a wonderful advisor. And Andrew is going to continue on with the next couple of slides.
Thank you, Alyssa. Advisory is a great opportunity for us to share how we are feeling on any given day with our peers and advisors. We thought we would check in with you on how you're feeling this evening. Please take a moment to use your device, if you have one on your table, and visit the URL here. You don't need to include your name if you prefer not.
So they're asking you to do that? If you, the black here. Andrew, would you like to read what the URL says?
Mary, do you want a phone book? Do you want to read it again, please? Slowly?
It's up on the screen too. It's up on the screen.
We can't see that far.
Poleev, capital E in the EV, dot com slash Laura Friend 218.
Oh, great.
Want to finish?
Just give us one more second here.
Oh, see, my response was.
Well, it's great, looks like most of us are feeling pretty great tonight.
Andrew, tell them what you were going to do if they were red and orange faces.
I was going to, I was going to say, well, that's not what I had hoped for. Check in is something we typically do with our groups in advisory. This diagram shows our advisory touches on all five skills that make up social emotional learning. For example, we often talk about decision-making, how to manage conflict, and getting to know ourselves and peers better, which helps to make us and our school stronger. Here is Harry, who will present the next couple of slides.
Thank you, Andrew. Our advisory time is made up of these four main parts. We usually begin with a greeting, then we do a quick share about our weekend or a particular topic. This leads to a fun team-building game or activity. Some examples of activities we have done include writing thank you notes, uplifting posters, creating compliments for peers, and mindfulness work. Games are a part of advisory. Here is a quick example of a team-building game with Ms. Macaria, our eighth-grade math teacher.
Say, go. Oh, wow, that's, can we still bring it down? One. Yes. And hold it. One, two, go.
Here is Gianna, who will take you through the last two slides.
Thank you, Harry. As a community, advisory helps us come together in a lot of different ways that we may not even know. Here is a survey that shows some of the many benefits an advisory has on a school. Like you did with Andrew, please use your device to answer this quick survey.
Take it to the same URL.
Click down. I'm just going to pass on this one.
So the correct answer is all of the above. As you can see, advisory is capable of benefiting students in all of these different ways. Now, last but not least, do you have any questions for us?
So is advisory just for eighth graders, or do all three grades have it?
All three grades have it, including fifth grade as well.
Fifth grade too.
So I'm wondering how many students, maybe on average, per grade attend advisory, and then how you get the word out about advisory?
So it's usually the whole grade is assigned to a certain member of the staff, and they'll divide it up into a certain amount of kids, maybe like around five to 10 per group. And it's kind of just like, they put it into a part of our schedule on certain days, which is how we get it around to the school.
So you're assigned, an adult, you're assigned your group. Got it. Great, thank you.
Do you stay with the same group throughout your years at the school?
Yes. So we have the same advisor, and we're in the same group, and then sometimes.
For a year. Well, for a year. For a year, though.
Oh, but across years, you switch it up?
Yes, so every year, we switch it up.
We're actually piloting, you guys don't know this, we're piloting six, seven, the same group.
Depends on how that feels.
Other questions? I'm just wondering about what, because you said it's been for four years, so you guys have always had it. I don't know if, because you haven't, you know, not had it, but what would you say, having advisory, how does that impact the rest of your school day or your feelings about school in general?
So I know that over the years, I've definitely made more friendships with a lot of people, and it's usually for me, if I'm ready to start off the day, something fun, and I can just kind of chill and talk to my friends and everything.
Does anybody else? I feel like you're in the hot seat there. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, like, especially if it's like a Monday or something, I can, I can like, like, chill, like, before I have to go to class, I'm not like, almost falling asleep in class.
Yes, sir.
So usually, it was actually really cool for me to meet new friends that I didn't think I was going to have at first. When I first came to the school, I didn't think I was going to have a lot of friends. And since we've done advisory for three years, I've gotten to meet a lot more people than I thought I ever would.
So I don't know, this might be for you, how are the groups organized? How do you put groups together?
It really depends by grade. In the eighth grade, I know that we look at, we no longer have a homeroom, but we look at it, we do have a homeroom list, so we kind of use that to kind of break them up. Sometimes we cut it in half, or we break it into three and go into different, so I have part of my own homeroom.
Oh, I see.
And then some others go to another eighth-grade advisor, and then another one goes, some others go to the nurse. So each group has eight, what did you say, five to 10, right? Five to 10. I think I had eight in my group this year.
Okay. And what kind of preparation time do teachers get for, to prepare if there's an activity or something in common that the school wants to do? Could you speak to that?
So, well, I know for the eighth grade, I've been kind of taking charge this year of changing up a few of the lessons. We had lessons from previous. Emotional learning, and we're doing some like great relaxation techniques, and we did some mindfulness and some, we did like a guided meditation one day. But we, I created the lessons, and I try to share them with my team before we're going to be having that actual advisor, advisory lesson.
What about the rest of the, the seventh and sixth grade? Is there someone? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there's one in sixth grade and one in seventh grade that kind of took the lead for them also.
Oh, I see.
So they kind of share out what they've changed, or what they want the students to do, and they kind of talk about it in their teams to make sure that everybody's on the same page. And it's not etched in stone. People can veer off of it, if they feel like, my group only exists today, we're not going to do what you guys are doing today, we're going to do this instead.
Okay. Have you built in, any ways for the students to be able to let their advisor know which things work, which things don't work?
Well, I mean, like, when you're advisory, like, if you, this is an act, like, example, like, if you have a day you didn't particularly enjoy, you can go to your advisor, hey, I didn't really enjoy this activity, so can we try something else?
But do you have any, go ahead.
If, so sometimes in the morning, they might ask you how you're feeling in the day, and maybe depending on the feeling, you can do like, if you're really tired, you could maybe do some mindfulness work and everything. And if you're like really energetic, like in the video, we do a lot of ball tosses and stuff like that.
Okay, so that makes sense. And it might be that there'd be some electronic way for you to evaluate, because that would be quick, just the way, you know, the faces are quick. But that's great to hear, that the students have some kind of input, and depending on what you're feeling, then the activity might very well change. That sounds great.
And you guys might remember filling out a survey at the end of the year.
Yes.
Right? Taking out a survey, asking them what things they liked, what they didn't like, what, you know, what maybe they would like put in. So we definitely look for their input.
Any other, like.
So there's probably a question, actually, for Brooke. This program is amazing, and I'm loving it. I want to know, does it exist in any other schools, or is there anything similar to it in the other schools?
Not really. I, um, just before Dr. Graham left, we were looking at trying to, um, implement something similar to this at the high school level. But there just wasn't the, the grounds well wasn't there to have it implemented. But we, we're, we are still continuing to look at doing this type of thing at the high school level. Do you want us to be?
Yeah, with the social, social emotional learning that we're doing with the Excel program and the S3 Academy, each school is finding its specific niche. So Sawyer and Hale are piloting this. They're a little bit behind where Laura is at. But if they're, the three middle schools are trying to come together around that same SEL focus at each of the middle schools, so that we have that consistent stream across districts. So that's what the work in the, you know, S3 Academy and the Excel program are doing for us right now. This is one example of how we're doing that, and the others are following suit, so.
I was just gonna say that I think that the high school is actually where this can be really effective, considering some of the challenges that, um, are indicative of that age. Uh, their day is so jam-packed. For them to have that time to pause and take stock, I think, is really important.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. Well, that's just exactly, yeah, is you, you hate to see it come up to this level and then stop in grade nine. So, I couldn't agree more with you.
Any other questions? Mrs. Friend, do you want to have the last word?
Always. I just wanted to say I'm so proud of our team from Luther Burbank. We're so grateful for our students, and we're really, you know, I tease them all the time, we're gonna keep them forever, but. They, they're great additions to our community, and they make us proud every day. So, thank you, and thank you parents for bringing the kiddos tonight.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, so, um, we're at, um, new business. We have a donation approval request for the Luther Burbank. Oh, hi!
Why is she gonna leave?
Mr. Grant as well is here. Mr. Grant, feel free to pull up to the table there. You're, you're part of the administrative team there, so.
So, we're here to ask for the school committee's consideration to accept a donation on our behalf. We received a thousand dollar donation to support financial assistance for families who requested financial assistance for our Washington DC trip this May. The provider of the donation has requested anonymous, anonymous, to be anonymous. And in speaking with the parent, I expressed incredible gratitude for their generosity and informed them that the next step was for, for us to present this gracious donation to the school committee for consideration. So that is why we're here before you tonight, to consider accepting this donation on our behalf. This marks the second donation we've received this year. So we're, for, for this purpose, we're really excited.
Very good. Um, do you want to make your motion?
Yes. I move to accept the one thousand dollar donation offered to the Luther Burbank Middle School to help defray the cost of the eighth grade Washington DC trip. Specifically, this gift is intended to help defray the cost of the trip for the three families who have requested financial assistance for the trip.
All those in favor?
Do you guys have a second?
Oh, I'm sorry. I love to second.
Discussion.
Mary loves to second.
Any discussion?
But also, I think of the timing of this, following the presentation by those so eloquent, competent, um, you know, eighth graders, showing the results of their education at your school, as well as advisory. We would say yes, anyway. But to have this follow-up from that is just perfect. So that was my, that's my discussion for it.
All right. Any other discussion? In favor? opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you, Steve.
So we did the program of studies reviews for the high school, and now we will invite Joan DeRogas up to do the special education update. Welcome, Joan.
Hi.
How are you?
Thanks for having me.
Oh, a pleasure.
I see I have 15 minutes, so, um, I'm not sure we're gonna stay with it. I know, you told me you could have more. There's a lot of slides to go for, so.
No, but I want to make sure, I know that you've put a lot of preparation into this, and I want to also have time for questions. But I think that, um, there's a, um, I appreciate the work you've put into this in building our understanding of, um, the Office of Pupil Personnel Services, and also the work you did in putting together the resource guide for the school committee. Good information. Thank you very much. So, it's all yours.
So, thanks for having me. I'm excited to be here tonight. Um, I thought I would just start off as, what is the work of the pupil personnel office? Because we have new members on the team, and in different districts, the work is different, depending on where you are. So just kind of put a bulleted list out, this is not an exhaustive list. Um, certainly, we have oversight of district-wide special education services and programs. Um, we serve as liaison to support building principles um, regarding any and all student concerns across the district. Um, we also provide district-wide support for students and families to resolve concerns, um, if they have questions. So our office is open to that as well. Uh, we provide educational guidance on the 504 process and civil rights. Um, and we just had PB the other day, and we're working on, um, improving our 504 eligibility and service delivery practice and what that should look like. So that's a year-long project we're doing through professional development with our guidance teams right now. Um, so while I don't oversee guidance, I certainly act as a liaison. They call me a lot to look for support around, kind of, some technical advice and student supports at the high school. Our office is, has grant and budget management. Um, and you'll hear lots about that when we have our presentation on the budget that's coming up. Um, and we work very closely with teaching and learning on professional development. So, not only do we come up with professional development for the staff that we support, but we also do it in concert with the district, with things that are happening district-wise, and part of that team as well. So that's a small snapshot, but certainly the office has is all of the technical pieces that go with the work. But I want to say, when I think about pupil personnel, I think about P. It's all about the pupils in our district every day. So I come to work every day, and it's students first, and everything else comes second. Um, so. The round circle. I'm sorry. No, it's all right. The round circle. No, this side of. This one? Yeah. Okay, thanks. So I wanted to give you a little bit of data for the school year. Um, I can. That's interesting. It's amber. It's amber.
Amber is a spring.
Okay, sorry. Go on, Joan. Everybody's phone. It does work. So I want to give you some data from last school year, just in terms of the number of meetings that were held in the district. Um, I can't do it for this year, because we're only about halfway through, but I wanted to give you some solid numbers for district-wide data. So, the district had, um, 1,023 team meetings. There were 168 initial evaluations. There were 190 reevaluations. Um, the initials are for students we're considering that may have a disability and require special ed services. The reevaluation meetings, by law, we have to test students every three years to make sure they continue to qualify for special ed. And the balance of those were the annual review meetings that we have, um, updating IEPs, goals and objectives, um, every year. So, where are we this year for data? So, the 1920 school year, um, we have, so if I look today, it probably would say 600. But I, this was the snapshot in time, because some students terminate from services, some students are added. So just keep that in mind, that that balance kind of goes up and down over time. Um, we have 608 students, um, on IEPs, pre-K to 5. There were 298, 6 through 8, 145, grades 9 through 12 plus, was 165. Um, and as of last week, there were 202 students on 504s, which represents 6% of students in the district. So I want to pause there for a second, does anyone have any questions, before I just like, charge ahead?
Charge ahead.
I can drink some water.
Oh, have a good one. Charge ahead.
Okay. So, special education, what's the process? This is honestly a 10-foot view, and it's a quick snapshot of the work we do. So I just want to acknowledge that to start. Because it's a very thoughtful, thorough process, and I would never do it justice, um, in this short amount of timeframe. So what starts the process? Um, the first thing that happens is, if we have a student that has a concern, if they come to the student teacher assistance team. Every school has a stat team. Um, they will discuss what the concern is to the student. If they see a gap or a concern, they will brainstorm tiers of intervention of how they can support the student through regular education. So this is really a regu- regular education initiative. So interventions through regular ed could be, um, a variety of things. There are tier ones, tier twos, tier threes. A lot of people know this as response to interventions. It's called RTI. And we provide intervention support to kind of fill in those gaps early of students that may have some gaps in learning. Um, and then we do some data tracking, and we reconvene to see if the student is making progress. Um, if the interventions do not yield progress, um, the referral for special education begins. So that stat team will make a referral to the special ed team, and then those teachers will discuss, you know, initiating an evaluation and considering all the areas of suspected disability. So that's how the start process begins. So I'm not gonna read through these to you. You have a flow chart in your packet. But these are all the areas of disability focus that we test around in order to identify a student with disabilities. And these are considerations we're making, because in Massachusetts, we have to test in all areas of suspected disability. So those are the categories. Okay, so, special ed, what's the process? Um, once testing is complete, it's really a three-pronged process. So through the assessment process, have we identified a student with a disability, one or more disabilities? So that's part one. There's a flow chart, and you will see it. Literally go through and ask very specific questions through that process. The second question is, is the student making effective progress? Um, so sometimes we say the student is making effective progress, even though they might have a disability, and they might not qualify for special education. Sometimes we might say they're not making effective progress. And then that third prong is, do they require specifically designed instruction to make educational progress? So that also could be a yes or a no, depending on what the team um, talks about, what the progress is. Um, and then some students might require an accommodation. So it may result they don't need specially designed instruction, but they might need accommodations, they might refer that to a 504 team. But it is a three-pronged process. It's, do you have a disability? Are you making effective progress? Do you require specifically designed instruction? So if we find all those three things are yes, the student has a disability, they're not making effective progress, and they require specifically designed instruction, we then develop, um, an individual education program, an IEP is then developed. So, the IEP has very many elements to it. So I let, I put a sample in your packet, so that you could take a look at all the elements. Um, you know, the first part we look at is what are the parents' concerns? Uh, we talk about the student's strengths and the key evaluation results. And then we think about a vision for the students. And we can look at that in a one to five-year range. Obviously, in elementary school, we're probably not looking that far ahead, but certainly we have to think about that as kids are approaching high school and post-high school, what the vision is. The next page is called PLEP A, Present Levels of Educational Performance, and these are for all the academic areas. So this is where we talk about how the disability impacts, um, the student's functioning in the content areas. So we write a disability statement there. If a student has a disability, say they have a specific disability in written language, or math, or reading, we'll write a specific disability statement of how it impacts reading, um, science, social studies, math. We then talk about what accommodations do the student, does the student need? How are we gonna look at their performance criteria? Are we gonna modify the content in any way? And how are we gonna measure progress? Um, we do the same thing on PLEP B, except PLEP B looks a little different on the IEP. So, that's really the related service, um, where we look at the related services. So some students might not need related services, and the other, the other way, some students might just need related services. So it's a real technical process. So if a student has a communication disability, we might, it might not be affecting academics, but it might be affecting them socially and communication-wise. So we might be just checking that one box on PLEP B, and then writing accommodations, and, um, how we're gonna deliver the service and measure the progress in that area. Um, the next part of the IEP is specific goals and objectives based on the disability. So, we title the goal, um, it could be, I don't know, let's talk about math, I guess. Um, so if it's a math goal, we're talking about what's the student's current progress in the math class. So we're actually using data that we already know, both from our testing and from what the teachers has, have given us in terms of performance criteria. What can the student currently do? That's a really important element, because what we want to do is, this is where they are and can do right now. And the benchmarks and the goals and the objectives is, where do we want to get them in a year's time? So the benchmarks and objectives in the IEP are actually measurable. So I think someone asked me a question about how do we, um, know the student's making progress? And one of the things is, those measurable goals help us take data. So when we're writing progress reports, we have data on those individual benchmarks and objectives. The next part of the IEP is really service delivery. Each of the, um, team members talks about how much time they would like to work with the students, and we discuss. There are three sections of the service delivery. Part A is consultation. So when we look at consultation, we think about, um, maybe our speech person, our VCB, the special educator, and the reg- regular educator are gonna meet once for 10 minutes in a cycle to talk about the student's progress and what we're working on towards goals. So that's identified time where the adults in the building will talk and consult on the student. That B grid, that middle of that page, is, um, a service provider will be going into a classroom to provide support. So, um, I guess the best example I can give is, we have, um, some co-taught classes at the middle school. We are, our special educator, and our math teachers and English teachers do co-taught. So that's where you see that, where it's a co-taught class, where the content teacher and the special educator are working together, and we write the time there. So the student's getting specially designed instruction and support right in that regular ed class. The C grid of the service delivery grid is, when are we taking the student out of the regular ed classes and providing direct services? So that might be reading services might be there, speech services. Any of the services that we provide would be in that C grid. And they'd be coming out of regular education, and we would be providing services outside. The next part is MCAS accommodations. Any accommodations that students have in PLEP A and PLEP B that we're using regularly are accommodations they can also, um, use for MCAS. So if they need frequent breaks, additional time, um, things of that sort, that would go on that page. The non-participation justification, that is a lot of page with a lot of information on it. So we talk about, why is the student not in general ed? What is the reason why we're pulling them out and providing the services outside of general education? The law says least restrictive environment, right? So we have to be thinking about that all the time. So we write a statement about that, the reason why the student is not during, in regular ed during that time. Um, the schedule modification talks about, does a student need a longer year? The schedule modification talks about, does a student need a longer year, a shorter day? Does the student, you know, require ESY services? So we have those conversations based on student's regression.
And ESY means what?
Oh, I'm sorry, extended school year, sorry. Thanks. Those acronyms, I'm sorry. So that's the place we talk about extended school year, where students, if we're finding they're regressing while they're away from school, that's, you know, we would write that in. We take data on every break. So when students come back in September, we take data. We take data in December, we take data in February. We want at least two data points to know if students are having regression so that we can provide services over that long gap in the summer. So that's where all that information is captured. Additional information, there could be medical information there. Anything that's pertinent to the student, if the student's taking medication or needs something additionally, we would put there. So those are a really quick snapshot. I can't believe I went through that in about five minutes. But it takes much longer at a team meeting. The next thing is, after we have all those elements of the IEP, all of that comes to talking about placement. So where do we, where will we place the student in the least restrictive environment? What does that look like, based on the service delivery? And how will we provide those services? Okay, I'm going to take a breath, sorry.
It's a lot to get through.
That, it's really a ten-foot view. I mean, we have very thoughtful meetings. You've just got a five-minute snapshot, so. And then the only thing I didn't mention is, there were other elements of the IEP that I wanted to mention to you was, one, there's a transition planning form when students turn fourteen. So I wanted to mention that, that's not for all students. But when students turn fourteen, we fill out that transition planning form because it's really talking about that next step towards high school and beyond. So that's places where we're capturing, students are coming to meetings themselves and presenting. We have them coming a little bit younger. We're trying to get them to come in and advocate for themselves and talk at meetings about what their goals are. And that's been really beneficial. We might be writing things like they want to get a part-time job. They want to get their driver's license. They're thinking about a four-year school or a two-year school, whatever their goals are in the future. So we are mindful as they're headed to the high school that those goals and that transition plan we're working towards throughout their high school year. So I wanted to mention that because that is one form that you probably don't see in front of you. But I wanted to let you know about that. The other thing I wanted to let you know before we get to the evaluation is, the Parents Rights brochure that's in your folder. Well, the news is it's been updated because Medicaid has made some changes. So I want to let you know there is a new Parents Rights brochure that has come out in the last month. And we are sending that obviously to our families. But I wanted to make you aware of that. The other thing that Desi has come out with, which I brought copies for you, so that you can see. They've added to their evaluation consent, once parents consent to the evaluation, that parents can request the evaluations two days in advance of the meeting. There's a checkbox there. So that didn't exist previously. This has just newly come out. Our district practices, we are typically trying to send the evals two days in advance. But now there's a place so parents don't have to ask for that separately, right on that form. So I think that that's helpful, parents and the district.
And I think Mary had a question.
I said a question.
Sure.
Would you set the table for these meetings in regard to, to the people who are at the meeting? Like any of the team meetings, who's there?
Who is there? That's a great question. So there's always a special ed teacher, a regular ed teacher. And then the team chair would be there. And depending on the type of testing we did, if we did a psychoeducation eval, it might be the school psychologist. It may be a speech and language pathologist, an occupational therapist, a physical therapist. So depending on what testing is done and who's working with the child, that's the development of the team that comes and sits at the table. Required in the parents.
Well, see, that's what I wanted.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's the part that I wanted. I wanted just to make sure that we.
I didn't know, yeah, of course, yes. Yeah, parents are always coming to our meetings. I have to tell you, that is one thing I have to, I have to say in this district is parents are always at our meetings and part of our meetings.
And parents are asked questions, for example. What's your, what's your vision for your child?
Yes. They're, they're part of that process. A lot of parents will come in with either written parent concerns or say, can we submit something after? They might talk about it generally and say, I would like to hear from the team and submit my concerns after. Or, you know, and then the whole team really talks about what the vision is for the student. Yeah. Okay. So how is the district program evaluated by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education? So our coordinated program review is coming in the spring of 2020. They'll be here in a couple of weeks, right, Dr. McGuire, to meet with us about our orientation. Our district was placed in tier one, group A. So those school districts that are in tier one, group A have been determined to have no or low risk. Tier one is really a self-directed improvement plan because our compliance has, we've done so well compliance-wise on performance criteria. They look at your last mid-cycle and that's how they determine how they group you. So three years ago, when I came and presented the mid-cycle review, we were fully compliant in all the areas. And so this year, they have selected certain criteria, which I will get to for them to evaluate. So in the spring, we sent in a self-assessment. And they'll be coming very shortly to kind of go through the process with us of what the next steps are.
Sorry, I have a question about the CPR. So the last one that was done, there were several areas that were considered, you know, partially implemented and looked like areas for improvement. So are you saying that somewhere in the mid-cycle review, those areas were cleared up? And that's why you can do a self-directed assessment now? Or where do we stand with those particular areas? Like what has changed since then?
So in 2014, I was not here. So I just wanted to say that upfront. I was here at the mid-cycle. And so the district submits data. So when I look back at that time, I know there were a couple. One concern was the location of a speech office at the high school. So where a service, a service was located. And that was changed before I even arrived. So they wanted to come and see the new space. There was, there was a new form for an autism checklist. I think that they didn't find when they went through a records review. So they were looking for consistency around using that form. So what happens is, once you go through your cycle, like back, I, I can't really respond to 2014, but I can tell you the process. They will send you areas where you're, where you've hit partially implemented. And then you have to write a plan within a few months of how you're going to fully implement those criteria. And then in three years, they come back and they say, show us now how that's been fully implemented.
Okay, so three years later, they came back and said, okay, all of these.
Yeah, they were here in 2017. They were here the first year I was here.
First year.
Yeah. And they said those areas were fully implemented.
Okay.
So, so we have submitted our self-assessment. So we're really excited about that. And then we'll be here soon. And then here, I just, I won't read through all of them, or maybe I can, if you'd like. So these are all the areas in which they have asked us to submit data around in the district. So this is kind of the criteria of our evaluation for being a tier one, group A district. So IEP development and content, parent participation in meetings, continuum of alternative services and placement. So you know, in your packet, I have, I've written what all the services are throughout the district. I've provided you copies of all the program brochures. I heard what Kim said tonight. So I didn't want to put the program brochures on the website until you were all able to see them. But I will be doing that and updating. And then kind of all the services and the continuum of services, you also have written in your packet. I'd like to add those to the website. So that is something that they asked to take a look at. How we use assistive technology in the district. Procedures we use for approved and unapproved on a district placements. Procedures to provide eligible students enrolled in private schools at private expense. Instructional grouping requirements. So everybody in the district, I had to create groups and ages and their dates of birth to show that we are within the forty-eight-month criteria that they establish. Age span requirements, programs for young children. So you have the preschool brochure. Equal opportunity to participate in education, non-academic, extracurricular, ancillary programs, as well as participation in regular education. And then related services for students who require such services like speech, OT, physical therapy, counseling. So those are all the, it doesn't, it doesn't sound like a whole lot, but it's a lot. So we had to submit all of this criteria and data from our database system so they can evaluate our programming. So that's how we're evaluated. We also do indicator data. So they require us to do several indicators throughout the year. And we've gotten some initial results already. So we submitted data in May of 2018. Indicator eleven is timeline adherence to testing students in the initial eval process. So we have to give the date the parent signed. We have to document when the testing is done. And we have to send them the paperwork to demonstrate that. So we got the data back. We were a hundred percent in compliance. Indicator twelve is ensuring that students from EI that are eligible must have an IEP developed before this. Oh, sorry, early intervention, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's the acronyms and I didn't spell that one out, I'm sorry. And so making sure that we have an IEP in place so students can stop services on their third birthday. And the district was found in compliance with no further activity or action required. Indicator thirteen is students with IEPs aged fourteen and above with an IEP that includes appropriate measurable post-secondary goals. So I think I talked about that earlier. So we had to submit that data as well. And there is no further activity or action required there. We were in compliance. So that's initial results from the coordinated program review. But those prior two pages, we saw the criteria will be getting more feedback as they go through their self-assessment. So the next part is our preschool program. So I'm really proud to say that Florence Sawyer did tremendously well on the National Association for Education for Young Children's accreditation. This is the first of a five-year term. The district overall scored a ninety-five point five percent on the criteria. And I forgot the binder.
That's all right. If somebody wants to see it, Joan has, there are the list of the categories, but she has an extensive binder with the indicators for each of those categories.
So Carrie Giambo, who is a teacher in the district, you know, she was appointed this position to work with me and created this binder. And the criteria around relationships, curriculum, teaching, those are all the criteria. The binder is this thick. So if you would like to see the criteria, I'd be happy to show it to you. Kathy said, can you, can you tell us what's in there? And I said, there are ten modules, there's a lot. But I'm happy to share it with you because there was a lot of really nice work done. And it's really exciting that, you know, we went through that process and we were reaccredited. I did bring, I did bring the Massachusetts indicator letters that Brooke and I both received so I could share that with you. I also wanted to let you know that Center School will go through reaccreditation on July first of 2021. And Mary Rollinson will go through April first of 2023. So each of the three schools are on a different schedule. So they keep us nice and busy. I'm not sure why we're not on all one schedule. And that might be something I'm going to investigate because our preschool programs and our kindergarten programs are all the same and we have all the same handbooks. So I am going to work on trying to navigate that differently. It seems like it would be better if we were all on the same cycle and we were all having the same conversation at the same time. So that.
Excuse me, Mary.
Sure.
So are the other two preschools, are you talking about they're going through the NAEYC process? Which I know that process because of going through it on a kindergarten level and how sweeping. It is really in-depth, very, very difficult. And it just, teachers and everyone has, they really have to look at every single part of the program. So I'm wondering whether Florence Sawyer, having successfully navigated this, you have people helping or just advising or mentoring?
Yeah, I think we'll bring a district team together. I think NAEYC has changed their process and they've gone live online, which has been extremely difficult for us to navigate their online system. There's been a lot of glitches in the system in terms of communication, uploading data. So we decided this year, we were going to do the binder and not just a physical upload because there are days you can't even sign. And it's been really challenging. But they're going through their system to upgrade. So my goal would obviously to be having Florence Sawyer team work with, you know, Center School. Center School went through this two years ago and they were reaccredited. But we're on this every two years, each town. And so we're one district. So I want to explore that a little more because I feel like comprehensively doing that together would make more sense. And it would be, I think it would be good for the district. Because we're going to be submitting like the same handbook in terms of our preschool handbook and so forth. And kindergarten is all aligned across the district of the work we're doing. So it's something to investigate once they have their system up and running. So how does the district measure success of students on IEPs? So this is just kind of a bulleted list of things that we think about is, you know, we don't always think about just academics. We also think about kids socially, right? And what are they participating in extracurriculars? So we want students to make academic progress. We want to see progress on their IEP goals and objectives. We want them to be participating in the least restrictive environment and inclusion. We want them to build skills that allow them independence and success in mainstream. We want them to have friends and develop their social skills. We have students that participate in all types of extracurricular activities, best buddies in unified sports. And then for our transition students, we want them to develop vocational employment skills. So I think those are all the things that really go into measuring student success for students who have IEPs. And just my professional development update. We, this year, have Landmark School coming. They, uh, Landmark School worked with all of our special ed teachers last year from grades three to twelve and trained them in language-based strategies. It was a terrific, terrific course. And the word was out. So this year, I worked with Todd and Martina and we decided that we would bring this training to our middle school social studies teachers. And it's a really great course because it gives students who might have a language-based disability, there were strategies that we can use with students in the classroom that regular educators that can implement so students can access the content. We find science and social studies are so vocabulary-heavy. And a lot of those texts are certainly written at a higher grade level. So they came in and did training with our middle school teachers this year. And we're going to have them come back and do the other content next year. So we're really excited about that work. This year, we have six sessions planned for our power professionals. So I won't read all those down the list. But really thinking about what the role is of the power professional is really important. So we have six sessions when we have release days. We have accept collaborative coming out. And we have a facilitator that's working with all of our power professionals in the districts on the topics that are noted. For our preschool teachers, we had Demi Howley. I actually took an SEL course last year. Eight Thursdays, probably the best thing I ever did. It was a wonderful course, although it was hard not to be in the district. But it was monthly and it was so worth it. And she has such skills at bringing mindfulness to young children. So I asked her, we got, we have a $298 grant. So I asked her, we got, we have a two ninety-eight grant, so I asked her if she would come and work with our preschool teachers, and she's been doing that trauma-informed work with preschool teachers, and they're really enjoying all the activities that she has to offer.
So you talked about it being mindfulness, and then it says trauma-informed, they seem to not be congruent.
Okay, so the trauma-informed classroom is really social-emotional support, but how do we deal with trauma in the classroom? So a lot of the mindfulness and stress release and coping, how do we bring that to our young children?
And how do you define trauma for preschool kids?
So some students we have that have disrupted living environments, we have students that are in foster care, we have students that have been in DCF care. So they come in with a lot of presentation that they might not be able to communicate their social-emotional feelings through words, and we see behavior. And we know behavior is language for kids, and that's how they talk with us, and that's how they tell us they're not okay. So what we're doing is we're teaching them coping. So we have some turtles that, you know, we use as puppets that talk. We teach calming strategies for them to do self-soothing. They have done, we've added materials into the classroom so kids can find tools for themselves to feel calm, or when they're feeling upset, there are things that they can use. Denny has brought some actual facilitation with the teachers, she actually does the activities with the teachers on what you can do to help students find calmness within themselves. So we do have a population of students who's really benefits, but I think in the end it benefits all kids.
Thank you, I just thought it needed more explanation.
No, it's fine, yeah, that's fine. And then our Whatton-Gillingham and Wilson training continue with new special educators in the district. I have had that initiative going on for the last three years.
Whatton-Gillingham and Wilson are.
Is our multi-sensory reading strategies for students. I do this work too well, I'm sorry. And we, you know, every year we have people who retire or new people come on board, so we have a couple of teachers that are out for Whatton-Gillingham training now. So we're providing those services to students at the best level that we can. So. That was a lot.
And I know you had some other questions, but did you have a?
I just wanted to ask a question about the training, because I was going to say, this sounds wonderful, but not necessarily specific to special educators. It seemed like those skills that you would be teaching teachers to then help students would be beneficial to all students. And so I was sort of wondering how this type of training fits in with the overall SEL professional development work, is it on top of it, is it part of it, like where, where are we in that puzzle?
So I think that we work together all the time, right? Todd, I mean, this is, our SEL, you know, initiative is really, a big focus will be next year, but I, I feel like there are students that have special education needs, and this is what our preschool teachers have said to us, we would really like some training around this because we want to be better equipped to help our students. So I think it really, it lies in of, it's that beginning step. We've done other things through professional development, and like zones of regulation throughout the elementary schools, that's for all teachers in the district. But I think that, you know, you, you start with this approach, and then you build on it over years. So I, I feel like the work that Denny is doing with preschool, I certainly already know the word is out, they want her to come back next year and do some training with other elementary teachers in the district. I think we're going to blend in some of the work that we do with zones of regulation and say, how can we enhance that? Where do we enhance it? You know, what are our next steps?
All right, so like for the trauma-informed classroom, you see that spreading vertically upward, and I would assume for the language-based strategies, you're talking about the middle school, social studies teachers, that that would spread both, both in terms of content and vertically up and down in different grades?
Yes.
So is that sort of the long-term?
It sure is, yes.
So we get some additional questions from the school committee that was submitted to Joan, and so I've asked her to, to go through them and respond, and then after that, if there's anything else that you want to conclude with, and then we'll ask other questions.
You know there's something I want to conclude with.
I know, but I'm going to.
I'm not going to leave without doing a student presentation.
No, no, but that's a good way to wrap it up. Go ahead.
So some of the questions that you passed on to me is questions about, you know, numbers of IEPs in the district that are accepted and rejected. So as of today, we have ninety-four point five accepted IEPs, five percent of partially rejected IEPs, and less than one percent of fully rejected IEPs. There was a question of how many times we've gone to mediation, this year we've gone once. There's a question about, a traditional PPS organizational structure includes a dedicated special educator, and the role here is multifaceted, and can I explain why it's a better fit? So the district redesigned this position when I arrived here. I think I was hired because I've done both PPS and special ed, and I have expertise in both. I did director of student services in Attleboro, I've done special education in Swansea, and I also did that in Attleboro as well. So I think that people were thinking I was a good fit, and having some of that principal experience for ten years, that I would be a good liaison to building. So I'm assuming that's why you reorganized the position, because you wanted someone with a wider lens to look at all students and not just special education students. So there were interventions and supports prior. Can I answer?
Sure. Before I lose it.
Yep.
Like in my mind. So I wonder, though, if, in a district of our size, and this may be a question for someone else as well, can one person, and I think that it's just you, Joan, can one person do all of the above, right? K to twelve, three towns, so many schools, so many children who are on IEPs, and then you're a liaison, liaison for five oh fours. Do we, is this the staffing that's necessary?
Well, I think we've had this discussion many times, and I know that Anne's role, for example, you've altered somewhat, and we continually tweak what's going on at her office to help fit the needs.
Explain Anne's role, please, and who and which.
Well, sure, actually, you'd probably be better, because Anne actually used to help to look after our off-site placements and such, but she's really always served as your second in so many ways. So maybe explain the change and what she's doing right now.
Sure. I think that's one of the questions about team chairs and who are they, but, so when I originally came to the district, there were these carved-out caseloads, and after being here a year, I already knew the caseload was too big.
Too heavy.
And so Anne's caseload in particular was to be the liaison for out-of-district placements, the students who lived at RFK, and she was the team chair for all our K to twelve district programs. That was just much too much, because we meet on Students Weekly and do consultation together, so she was out of the building. There were a lot of pieces with an out-of-district placement, there were a lot of pieces with students live in a group home setting. I said, oh my goodness, this is much too much. So I shaved some of that off and reassigned it to somebody else. And then Katie Giannetti is our special ed department chair at the high school. So Katie does a lot of work with guidance, she does a lot of work with scheduling, she does a lot of supervision with special ed teachers, she had a caseload at the high school herself, she was teaching classes, and I said, oh my goodness, this is way too much too. So Katie actually, and I found the first year I was here, our eighth-grade parents were really concerned about that next big step to the high school, and who would it be, right? It's a huge transition to go from middle school to a large high school. So our middle schools are around three hundred, three twenty-five, and we go to the high school, and there are more than eleven hundred students. So I would get a lot of calls from parents saying, like, how is this going to work? I don't understand that class. I, I'm nervous about my IEP meeting, and I would be like, I'll come, let's talk about it. And I felt like I knew the information, but I'm not sure parents did, so what I did was I retooled Katie's role, and I took her caseload and her teaching away at the high school, and she actually became the eighth-grade team chair. So having a person sit as a team chair at an eighth-grade meeting, and really being able to talk to parents about the classes, the special ed supports, how the service is delivered at the high school, and them having that connection throughout the eighth grade year was wonderful. I didn't get one call from a, from a parent at that point, they felt like, oh, she's my connection. And then she did step two, she brought them to the high school, we had all the meetings at the high school. So we had a meeting at their middle school, we had a meeting at their high school, parents were involved in both of those meetings, we had guidance come in, they met their guidance counselor, so there was this really smooth transition of, oh, I know how the services are delivered at the high school, I know who the guidance counselor is, if there's a concern, I can call Katie. So that was an alteration that I made as well. So she picked up a piece of the caseload. And then we also had people that were like in all three towns, which I didn't really think was very effective, so what I did was I shifted those caseloads and said, we're going to have this team chair do this piece of a Stowe caseload, and this piece of a caseload between Center and Hail, a lot easier to travel. I wanted to get people off the roads more and more in buildings with kids and being available. I did the same thing in Bolton, and I did the same thing in Lancaster.
So you have a team chair for each?
There's more than, there's actually more than one team chair for each town. So in Stowe, Lori Anselmo does pre-K to three, and then Jen Sanco does from four to seven. And Katie has the eighth graders. In Bolton, so, and it depends on numbers, so just, just know there's numbers games that go with this, because I look at what the caseloads are, and I try to make sure that they have the equal amount of cases across the district. So in Bolton, we, and then we have an early childhood coordinator, I haven't talked about that as well, she does all the preschool meetings. So that wasn't happening in that role prior to me being here. So two years ago, when Cindy decided to retire as the early childhood coordinator, really gave us a chance to look at that role and say, maybe we want to change this, here's our opportunity to really look at this position. It was really fragmented because team chairs were doing preschool roles, but Cindy was doing early childhood, so we actually joined those together. So now Liz Garofi does the early childhood role and the playgroups and all the preschool meetings. So that's been super helpful as well, and she does that in all three towns, but she's also our community connection, she does playgroups out in the community, and she supports the playgroups that are here. So it, she's the face of our early childhood, and so people know, oh, I met her at the library, I have a concern, or I have a neighbor that has a concern, I can talk to her, how do I, who do I get in touch with? So she became the link for our preschool. Lori Anselmo was doing all that work in all three towns. It was, it was too much. And then Lancaster is split, Lori does three days in Stowe and two days in Lancaster, or vice versa, and she does pre-K to two in Lancaster, and then Mike Pease works from grades three to seven, and he has a small caseload at the high school to help Lauren, because the high school has lots of students, and Lauren Mahoney is the team chair school psychologist. So we really tried to rebalance the role in the last two years. This year, Katie has been so excited about our special ed programs that we decided we were going to tweak her role a little more, and she's taken on Pace Middle School, Pace High School, and the Transitions Program as the team chair.
And what's Pace? What's Pace?
Oh, it's our, it's our special ed program, you have those brochures, it's at the middle school, it's personalized academic and community experiences at the middle school, and at the high school, it's personalized academics and career education at the high school. Thank you. See, I need her to keep me on track if I talk.
And Leah, I'm just thinking too, the other thing that we did is we added some additional clerical support about two years ago, no, two years.
Well, this year, this year's the first time full-time. Last year we added part-time, we added clerical support in the office.
And then you'll see, when we do our workshop next Saturday, that there's some, some asks in there that will probably move forward, that we probably won't cut out right at this point in time. I don't know whether this survives, but the asks are there. So, you know, we were talking today, I mean, you never hesitate to ask for what you need, ever. Now, that's a positive, I mean, it really is. She's, she's a strong advocate for her program.
So more questions?
Okay, sorry. So I think I answered some of the questions as I went through about that. Some of the questions are about the students that are on IEPs, so out of that eighteen point five, one point nine are pre-K and K students, and sixteen point six percent are students in six through twenty-two. That's the way the data, just so you know, it's not grade level, we have to aggregate that data for the Department of Ed very differently than you usually see. It's not grade level, it's literally pre-K and K, and then within that one point nine percent, there are six categories of how we report student services. So it's very, there's a lot involved in how we report that. And then how does that compare to across the state in Massachusetts? Where, in comparison, they're at eighteen point one through Massachusetts, and we are at eighteen point five. And then someone asked, how does that compare to other districts? It's actually a state report, Desi puts out a yearly, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education puts out a yearly report of every school district and what their percentage is of special education students are. So that's something, if you want me to send you the link, I could do that, and you could look at the different districts. Last year, we were at seventeen point seven percent, but please know, as students move in, we had twenty-four students move in on IEPs, that brings our percentage up. But I could tell you next week it was down. It's like a moving target all of the time. And I also want to mention, when we look at percentage, our district-wide enrollment has decreased over the last two years, a hundred and fifty-six students, so then it looks like your population has come up because our regular population has gone down. There was a question about percentage of students on IEPs that are full inclusion, partial inclusion versus substantially separate. So I did some data, and sixty-two point five percent of our students are in full inclusion, eleven percent partial inclusion, five point five are substantially separate. Like I said before, about ten percent pre-K and K, but just be mindful, there are six categories, so some students might be on an IEP and just coming in for related services like speech, but there are six categories in that area. And then four percent of students are out of district, and seven percent of students are represented by, parents might have a student in public schools, they might homeschool, that might represent proportionate share. We might be only having programmatic responsibility of a student, but they still are in our count, so if they live in our boundaries, but we're not physically responsible for them, we still have to programmatically sit and run their IEP meetings. And then some students are in placements determined by other agencies. Some of the other questions. Enrollment for Connections, RISE, and the LINKS program is some of the questions that I have. So our Little Friends program has eight students, our Friends program has four, our Friends Two program has five, Pace Middle School has six, Pace High School has ten, Transitions has four students. Our Class Connections program has six students, Middle Connections has eight students, our programs here in Bolton, Early RISE, there are four students, RISE has seven students, and at the high school, our Therapeutic Learning Center has thirteen. So one of the questions is, are any of our programs under and over-enrolled, and what happens? So I'm not really shy, if our students need something, and I feel like we don't have the staffing, or we need more support, I look within to see, has something shifted in the program? Or I do have one position that's a floating paraprofessional position, so I sometimes will move that position to support another program. Or if I'm worried, I'm in Brooke's office to say, I'm worried, the numbers are coming up, we need to talk. So we are constantly making sure that we have appropriate student-staff ratios. I will tell you, most of our programs are a two-to-one ratio, some are probably even higher than that, because we are dedicated to supporting our students well to make sure they're being successful. And I'm constantly reviewing the numbers throughout the year. So what makes a program successful is one of the questions. Mr. Malkin, Mr. Grady, I'm going to invite them both to come back, one is sick and the other one had a medical procedure today. Because I thought it would be really good from the lens of a principal, if you could hear, they have two of the newer programs in the district that they are super excited about, of having at Center and Hail, and they have really embraced these programs. So I'm just going to give you some bulleted words, but I would love it if you would invite them back, because I think that hearing it from them. because I think that hearing it from them, what programs have done and how they've been created have supported what's going on in the district, I think would be great. So here's just some things I think about when I think what makes a program successful. Are they part of the school? And is there a sense of community? Are our services comprehensive? Is the program flexible to assist students in meeting high standards? Are we providing smaller individualized instruction, support in the mainstream, collaboration between regular ed teachers and special educators? Are our teachers teachers who choose this as their life work? Are parents, are they, are they beyond qualified as paraprofessionals? I would tell you in many cases, yes. Are students advocating for themselves? Are they making progress academically, socially? Are they participating in things outside of school? Is our school culture positive and accepting of learning differences? So in this district, I could say yes to all of these things. So those are just my thoughts of being in buildings all the time every week, but I, I would love for them to come back. If you invite them back to, to hear from them about that so they can share their own experience. Are there other questions? I feel like I answered some of the people.
Do you wanna, oh, I'm sorry, Mike?
I just want to thank you for coming and giving us, giving us sort of an overview of SED. I'd like to return, if it's possible, to this notion of metrics. And I know that you've given us some anecdotal metrics, some anecdotal information about the success of a program, but really, this is sort of at the core of how decisions are made. How do we evaluate how successful a program is? I know that we've had some residents speak out about this earlier tonight, but that was not an opportunity for discussion. And not this year's school committee, as I recall, but last year's school committee, we had sort of a similar conversation about providing metrics to evaluate efficacy. And I know that we've talked about, or you provided us information about how the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education evaluates us and assigns us a level of compliance. But really, how do we figure out whether our programs are effective, appropriate, and how we are collaborating with parents as stakeholders regarding the efficacy of these kinds of programs?
So are you looking for data and numbers?
Well, so, so, yeah, so two things. First, I guess, how do we do that? How do we gather information? Whether it's hard numerical data or whether it's anecdotal information? And then the second piece is, if and when you come back, and I'm sure you will come back, can you share that with us so that we can say, "Okay, here's this data that supports that this is a really effective program rather than just a new initiative. This is a really effective program so that when questions come to us, we can turn on, pass those along to parents and say, 'We've got really hard data that says that this really is an effective program' or survey data or something so that we can measure that.'" So there's kind of a two pieces, there's two pieces for that.
So I will say that coordinated program review, I submitted all the programs to them. So that's gonna be part of the review of our extensive services that we provide in the district. I think some of the concern I heard tonight as well is people think that these are resource-based classrooms where kids are not included and they aren't. They're inclusion programs. If I, you know, I guess I can tell you about a couple of students. I mean, we collect data in a variety of ways. The problem is, a lot of it is individualized. So when I think our program's successful, I think our, you know, parents are agreeing to have their students be part of a program because they see a benefit to it. I think over time, when we measure success, if Ross was here tonight, I know he would say this, and Kyle as well, because we talked about it. One of the things, we have some students that went from our Connections Program at the elementary school that now are at Hail, are fully included. So I see that as a measure of success. Kids have made gains. They don't need supports and they've gained skills that they need in order to access regular education. They are getting the supports they need, but it's gonna open them up for many more options going forward. So it's really hard to take a program and just say, "This is what the success looks like" because success is about the individual student. So if you looked at our service delivery grids of students in those classes, some of them have lots of supports and they might be getting instruction in the program, but then other students are out in the mainstream and using the ancillary supports. Maybe they're coming to a social pediatrics and counseling group that's happening in the program because they've grown their skills so far that they don't need to be taught in that classroom. So it's, and, and, you know, we're evaluated by, you know, the department that they look at all of our programming. And I submitted, what you have in front of you today, I've submitted to their review.
And I would say, Mike, if people have questions, I mean, like if somebody came to me with a question about special education, I would tell them to call Joan.
Yeah, no, but I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, when, when, when we're asked to form an opinion about something, you know, as, as a teacher of science, like the first thing I do is I think data. How, how are we using data to inform this decision? So, and I guess part of my question is, we have these external mechanisms to review. Do we have internal mechanisms to review? And I don't even know if that's, I mean, I don't live in the SED world. I'm a teacher and I'm involved with SED, but I don't, I don't know the internal components to it. So I don't know how to square that. How, how we internally evaluate success or effectiveness? How does that, what does that look like? And I know that there are, there are levels of sensitivity when it comes to individuals and we certainly don't want to address those kinds of things.
That's the technical part of this work. So independence, our students' growing independence, because that is certainly a goal of mine because we can have paraprofessionals and working with teachers in the classroom, but in the end, we want them to be able to grow and be independent and be able to advocate for themselves. So we look at those pieces. What are growing independence? We had, we had a couple of students who had lots and lots of supports when they were in elementary school. They went over to Kyle's program and they are fully included now. We've had students in our social-emotional program. They went to Early Rise and they went to middle school and they're not part of our social-emotional program anymore. So it's, how are they growing over time? And how are they being included? And so it's very individualized per student. So it's, it's tricky.
Yeah.
But I also look at, what's, what's our teacher retention to? Are teachers staying? You know, that's a, that's a, you know, people being committed and having the support they need to support the students to be successful has to be weighted. Our teachers love these students. This is their life work. I can't, and I invited you all, I invited actually last year's school committee to come, but if you want to come and see a program, please come say.
And I think that's a great idea and I hope people will take advantage of that. I know I have and it's, it's an eye-opener. But I think I'm gonna move the, the discussion without objection. Leave, all the, only because of all these people, you're my favorite.
And I have one little, I have one quick video that I would like to.
I want you to show the video.
Okay.
Leah, quick question?
I think that, I think that one question, if I had to push this down to just one question on my very long list. So I'm with you, Mike, and I, and I think that all programs, if we're gonna fund them, especially with ratios that you mentioned, you, I think that we have to defend their effectiveness more concretely than what you just said. So I would, I would encourage the district to defend their programs to the public that is, that is, you know, taxpayer dollars are going there. But my, my other question is, when you have discrepancy between maybe outside testing and internal testing and parents feeling like the placement that has been suggested for their child is not what they want, either because it's out of their town or... So how do you work with parents within the team meeting and not just tell parents what service you're gonna provide, but actually include parents in the conversation around how their child will be placed and, and do it in such a way that we avoid mediation and even litigation?
So I think that teams are charged with difficult conversations. And I think that sometimes parents and team members may not always see through the same lens. So sometimes we have a conversation. We recommend services. Parents don't agree or they don't agree with a placement. So they have, parents have options, right? So they can accept they, an IEP. They can accept part of an IEP. They can reject an IEP. We, we come back to the table and we talk about what those rejections are thoughtfully. Sometimes teams are at impasse. They really feel like a student needs a service or a certain level of service that a parent might not agree to. There are times, if, you know, we might not think it's educationally sound, but if they don't agree with it, we might try to come to meet some middle ground around an IEP service, even if we don't agree. We will note that though in the proposal letter, that we don't agree because we're worried the student will not make the progress that we expect them to make with this amount of service. But parents also have a right to go through the due process procedure as well.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Please, let me get a quick piggyback comment. It's not a question. Go ahead. Thank you.
So the same questions around metrics that you guys have sort of asking about, have been rolling around in my head too. And I understand that this type of work doesn't really lend itself to quantitative measurement. It's by nature, it's individualized, right? Like IEP. But in a way, that sort of leads us down a path of testimonials as metrics. And how do you weigh one person's testimonial versus another person's unless you're looking at all of them and then you're sort of taking the percentage? So as a committee, it puts us in a really tough spot when we are allocating resources or voting to approve programs or change programs. When we hear something's working, but then we also hear from, not just the people here tonight, but like we get emails that say, "It's not working." And so that just puts us in a really awkward position. And I think, I don't want to speak for anybody else, but I know I'm just looking for other ways to objectify things to say, "It's not just one person's word versus another."
It's a team. So that's what I will say to you is, the team comes, like our parents call and will say to me, "I don't agree." I can't overturn a team decision by law. A team makes a recommendation around services and placement. If a parent doesn't agree, they can't call me and say, "I want you to change that decision, Mrs. Daniels." I might say, "I'll come to that next meeting and listen to the conversation and see if I can make suggestions." Sometimes we have to agree to respectfully disagree. And it, and the problem is, it is very individualized. There are not two, and I think there's not any two regular ed students that are the same either. We all have strengths and weaknesses and we make recommendations that we think are appropriate that will help the student make progress. And I think it's, it's, it's tough work. It's work that I absolutely love, but there were also a lot of hard conversations to be had sometimes. And sometimes not everybody's always in the same place and sometimes we have to respect that.
And there's a process too, if there, if there is an impasse and it's outlined in the materials that, that you got. And it is hard. It's not like getting an MCAS report where you can see all the information. It's highly individual. And I think the progress that the students make and the amount of, I think it's well-staffed. The programs are comprehensive. And I think that when there are disagreements, there's certainly, Joan's very accessible and, and there's a process that, that can be followed. And I think some of the data that she did share relative to acceptance of IEPs and the extent to which things go to mediation or IEPs are rejected, I think that's indicative of success and satisfaction. But this has been very comprehensive and very, very appreciated. And if there are items that the committee wants follow up on, I would welcome you sending me that information. But I do want Joan to, and Steve, I am gonna call on you after I say that, after Steve's comment, I would like you to share the video that you have. Yes, Steve.
My only, my only comment is that this seems to be an unbelievably subjective situation. You, you probably have each individual child is evaluated and is placed based upon the trained knowledge of the professionals here. It may not always be what I want for my child. And I can certainly understand the parents' rationale for many of their disagreements with, with, with the, the operation. But we're looking, when you're looking for metrics, we're looking for firm numbers on, by counting the grains of sand, how many grains of sand are really in the quicksand and how many are not. And I think it's very difficult to quantify, and I'm a quantifier, as you well know, it is very difficult to quantify the, this particular segment of the educational program we are trying to provide to our students. Almost impossible.
Okay, cue the video.
Okay, so one more thing though because the C-PAD people will be upset if we don't announce this. There's a parent social at SED.
Wait, 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 wait. Under our committee reports.
Oh, it's there? Okay, just wanted to make sure.
I was charged. So it will get sent.
Okay.
So cue the video.
So one of the things that you asked me about was goals for next year and I've been talking about Transitions, our adult program. And we have identified space that has been approved by the superintendent and we are going to be working to start that. Ooh, is that for one second?
I thought she was told to cue the video.
Sorry. Well, can you just rewind it a minute? So my transition students were here. It's okay. My transition students were here to speak with you last year and Sydney Miniger, which you saw her Unified Sports Presentation, gave me permission tonight to share this with you. She's probably watching TV right now to say, "Oh, my God, when am I gonna see that video?" Here it is, Sid.
Yeah, wake up.
So she gave us permission to share with this, with you tonight. And this is some of the work that we're doing with our post-graduates. So now you can cue the video.
Thank you. Sorry.
Thanks.
Everybody should feel comfortable with a job. Being a hard worker is just something I enjoy.
People might think that hiring someone with an intellectual disability means that you're hiring someone who will learn at a slower rate or who might not be capable of doing the jobs, but with the right supports, individuals with intellectual disability can contribute so much.
In previous episodes of Inclusion Weekly, we have talked about Special Ops Unified Champion School programs.
But what happens to people with intellectual disabilities when high school is over?
Tonight, we are going to learn about job preparation and how important it is for inclusion even after high school.
The unemployment rate for people with intellectual disabilities is more than twice as high than individuals without intellectual disabilities.
I'm currently in a program where I go to all different kinds of job sites and learn about employment skills.
We go to two retirement homes and help set the dining room for lunch and then help clean.
And I help out at a unified gym.
We are here today to meet Brendan and see why it is important for him to have a gym for people with and without intellectual disabilities.
Initially, I was going to school for special education because I knew I wanted to work with people with disabilities. So tried to figure out a way that I could incorporate both, like my love for teaching and my love for fitness. When the right environment is created and when the correct supports provided, people are very capable. I was running a special Olympic programs in the area and I wanted to create a gym where those athletes could work out. So I started kind of figuring out how to start a business that could incorporate athletes with and without disabilities. Sid's been great with inventory, just kind of filling in some of the tasks that takes a little bit off my plate.
Some employers see the disability first and they don't consider the skills they may have. The reality is they're still able even though they may not see that in them.
I don't want people to look at someone with a disability as less capable. I just want them to look at it as like, what do I need to do to set them up for success?
A lot of individuals with intellectual disability brings so much more to the table.
As you enter the workforce, look around and see if organizations are hiring people with intellectual disabilities.
Remember you and people you know will be in hiring positions and able to make a difference.
So talk to your bosses or even your parents about the importance of inclusion in the workplace. To learn more and to get involved with Special Office Unified Champion Schools, visit generationunified.org and check back as we post more episodes of Inclusion Weekly.
Thank you. Awesome. Thank you, Joan. Thank you so much, Joan. I know we went way over time. I do think this is an important part of our programming. And many times, school committees don't have the big picture, the full understanding. You know, with anything, as a teacher, I heard more from people who weren't happy with me than the people that were. But it's all part of the mix. So we want to learn how we can get better, but it's also important to identify those things that are going well and that the strengths that we can build on. So thank you, Joan. And as I said, if there are more questions that folks want to do as a follow-up, please send those to me and we will make sure that we get you those answers.
Okay, great. And if there's something I can answer tonight, I did prepare to answer all those questions so I can send those responses along as well.
Very good.
And you're going to stay up here for early education? Just really quickly, we're going to just do.
Sure, I feel like I covered that with the preschool.
Actually, I think you probably pretty much did, but I think, Pat, you're going to come up and talk about preschool, proposed.
Tuition increase.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And the other thing that I would like, would want the school committee to know too is the trending that we're seeing right now for the free full day K for next year is pretty much spot on with what we thought we would be seeing. A little bit of a spike up right now in Bolton and a little bit of a spike in Lancaster. Stowe is exactly where we predicted it. So just two little spikes right now, but nothing that you look at. So we have to have another classroom or anything like that, just little spikes up in numbers, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
And so we're going to talk just really quickly about the proposed pre-K tuition. And we do this every, but we've been doing this every year for the last two or three years. So let's speak about that quickly.
So I've looked at the expenditures for this year and last year and we determined that it is really a good idea to continue to increase the tuition for the preschool program by 2%, which most of the program, the costs involved in the program are the salaries. And because we have a union and they're entitled to increases according to their contract, it's really important that we keep up with that. So I'm recommending a 2% increase across the board on the three, three-day half-day program, the five-day half-day program and the five-day full-day program. And I put up on the screen here the annual cost, but I can tell you what that amounts to on a monthly basis. I mean, a yearly basis, it's a $60 increase for the three-day program, $90 increase for the five-day program and for the five-day half-day program. And the five-day full-day program is $181. And that's for the year. And it comes down to $6 a month, $9 a month and $18 a month. So I would like to bring this forward to you for your consideration tonight. And if possible, if you could vote, that would be great.
Steve?
I can see what you're doing. You're moving 2% and 2%. We have a kicker at the end of this contract, an extra half percent. Have you factored that in?
Yes.
So next year really should be 2.5% over what we have this year.
Well.
And that's assuming that we're going to settle at the same 2%. So what you're, you're making some assumptions and I don't think you're including a half percent.
Well, I think we thought about that and we thought that the 2% increase was probably where we needed to land only because of the way, this past year was the first year of the change of the program. So we don't know really until a full year, this full year is completed, whether or not we're going to continue to have the same amount of revenue. And we don't want to really burden any increases on the program or on the parents who participate in the program unless it's necessary. I can see your point, Steve. If that's what you want, if that's what you want to propose, that's fine. But I'm really comfortable with the 2% right now.
And keep in mind too, that this is a piece of, a piece of the funding stream, right, for us. And by doing what we, what we did with that program, it is much more fiscally sustainable as it is right now. And I, so when Pat says, I'm comfortable with this, that means that we are comfortable with the trending that we're seeing right now. But I see exactly where you're coming from, but I don't feel, I feel the 2% is enough.
Oh, lame.
Can you refresh my memory? Because I do feel like you've told me this before. So I apologize. What the tuition is designed to cover? Because I know in the preschool, it's really, the preschool program is designed around students on IEPs and they don't pay tuition, they don't pay for their services. So like what, what have you designated this tuition to cover in order to say that it's financially sustainable? Like, I don't, I don't think the kids not on IEPs that are paying tuition would cover the whole program. That would be impossible.
No, no, it isn't possible. And basically, we really don't even know what we're going to get for tuition until these kids come forward. Because it isn't like a typical, it's like we know who our kindergarten students are going to be, like probably because we've had some of them in the preschool, then they come into kindergarten. Or it could be that, you know, we have move-ins, younger students, younger kids coming into the program. This is, this is always that.
It's like a projection. And you take a look at your trends and you see, and you see what's happening in your, the buildings in your community. You take a look at a myriad of factors because you're right, it's always a little bit, a little bit of an unknown. But we've, but we feel very comfortable with putting this forward right now and trending and watching what, what we're doing with the program.
There's always a waitlist, so you know that the.
But we only have so many slots.
Little model slots.
Right. So I think you would know how much tuition presumably you take in because those slots are usually always filled.
Usually.
This year, early in the year, we had a couple of slots that were open, so we were able to fill them, but they weren't filled until.
And I'm just wondering, free and reduced comes into play here as well. See, there's all other, there's all kinds of other little factors that are at play here as well. It's not, it's not cut and dry. We've got this many slots, this many kids, and so we know this much. There are these unknowns that, that come into play later on.
Trying to understand what you're shooting for. Are you shooting for like 50% of the cost of the program or 50% of salaries or something?
I shoot for 50%, but it's not realistic.
So it's under that?
Yeah.
Other questions?
Good question.
Does anyone?
I'm sorry. I'll move. I will move to increase the preschool tuition by 2% as presented for the 2020-2021 school year.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Okay, thank you.
So thank you, Joan, for everything. Pat, you're going to stay up here?
I'm going to stay up here.
Yeah, we're going to stay up here for a minute here.
Thank you, Joan.
Do some, some old business. Yeah, well, actually, no, it's the preliminary FY21 budget. We just want to talk about quickly here.
Oh, sure.
And just give you an update of where.
We don't have a slide on that?
No, there's no slide on it because we're just going to talk it through right now. Because it changes daily, actually, right now, sometimes even from the morning to the afternoon.
Sure.
And so we just want to let you know that that is the stage that we're at right now. I think when it first came in, the first number. Now, keep in mind, when we say these numbers, there are a number of different factors. And right now, a big one for us is that we don't know what our revenues are. And we won't even have an idea of the revenues until probably the day before workshop, quite frankly. Like we're just, like that's.
We're hoping that we've got an idea by then.
But it depends on when the numbers are released. So we've, so when we say a percentage, there's, there are a couple of things to keep in mind. First of all, the revenue that's going to help to offset that. And then the fact that, you know, when we first devised that budget, that preliminary draft in December, that's, everybody who wants anything has got it in there. Now, they don't shoot for the moon, quite frankly. They're pretty grounded with it. But like we're saying, like Joan was very specific with some of the things that she had in there. You know, the principals have asked for some things, but quite frankly, we've already cut some of that, you know, that we're not even going to bring to you on the workshop date, quite frankly, because we started at a 10% differential. And of course, like that's just realistically, that's, that's just where we landed and there's nothing wrong with that. That's just where we landed. So we did, so right now, as we've been working at whittling it down, and this is not where we're landing by any stretch, but where we sit right now is around that 6% to 7%. That's where we sit tonight. Probably won't be there on Friday, but that's where we're sitting tonight. So I did say to Pat, we'll probably bring it down to around that 5% to 6% and then see what the revenue offsets are going to be. And then if we have to go back after it again, then we'll go back after thereafter. As I said, you know, the towns have given us an idea of where we need to come in with them, so we're very aware of that. So that's, that's kind of a broad overview of where we're at as we sit here tonight for, for our numbers. So it's ebb and flow.
Right. And we've done a, for us, deep dive as a group, Michelle and Superintendent Clunchy and myself, Michelle Cody from my office. And we've already looked at bringing some of the costs down, some of the asks down.
I think it was like a million something.
Yeah. I mean, we give them that opportunity to request things. And, you know, some things, we say, why weren't we doing that all along? Yeah, that makes sense or whatever. We allow them that type of opportunity. But again, what I want to say to you is we're waiting for these state numbers. And these state numbers are, is two-faceted, is, and that's how they affect our, your assessments and your member towns. And the, then one piece of it is the minimum local contribution. And they've made some changes there. It's a key item for this year's budget. We don't know how that's going to be affected in our budget. We don't know if some of the communities are going to have major changes, little changes, no changes at all. We really don't know. And then again, we're expecting at least minimum cost of living raise in Chapter 70. We, again, those changes to that formula of Chapter 70 may affect us, you know, that we don't get any additional revenue. I'm hoping that's not the case, but we, we just, you know, being very cautious on identifying things in the budget that we can move out if we have to and make sure that we hit that target number.
We're also looking to see if there'd be some changes in Circuit Breaker that, that are on the horizon. And I know if you were reading the MASC, the Massachusetts Association, MASC bulletin that went around today that was talking about, I mean, both Circuit Breaker, we're taking a very close eye to, and regional transportation is another one.
Regional transportation as well.
You know, and, and we're waiting to see how ESSA affects all of this, like the new, the new school act. So, you know, and, and the foundation review and how that's playing into this. So we've got another, a number of key indicators right now that we're watching to see that we just, we have no idea how it's going to flush its way out. That's why I said, I think we'll kind of, when we hit around that real 5% to 6%, we're going to sit and wait and see what happens with the revenue and how it can offset the budget numbers. And then we'll, we'll make some decisions from there.
Still have more to do.
I know that this is a really lengthy process. And I noticed in the parking lot, it says that our, we're scheduled for our final vote on March 11th. I wonder if that is a soft or hard deadline?
I believe that's a hard deadline.
Regional agreement.
Yeah, because I think by charter, we have to have it done by the 13th, right?
Okay. So we're pushing it off as far as we can to give us.
That's normally what we do.
Okay. Just curious.
15th is a hard.
15th, sorry, thanks.
Elaine, do you have a question?
Oh, I was just going to say, I follow education financing at the state level pretty closely and it is going to be volatile for the next few years. There's a lot of changes and there will be unintended consequences. Any big legislative change is going to have unintended consequences. So, yeah, everybody bear with everyone else.
I couldn't agree, I couldn't agree with you more. I'm worried about the unintended consequences. We've had that discussion. I agree with you 100%.
Other questions? Thanks, Pat.
Thank you.
One other item?
The regional transportation.
While she's right here, do you want her to do that?
You go.
But that's super quick.
Certainly.
So back on September 25th, I presented some recommendations for the use of the EMD funds. And one of the things that I identified was we had excess regional transportation money in our budget last year, in our revenue stream last year. And I recommended that we transfer that into a revolving fund that is specific for regional transportation and can only be used for regional transportation expenditures. And I just need a vote from you tonight to make sure, so that we can solidify that going forward.
Yeah, this is not, nothing new to you. You've heard this, this before. We got some additional money that we weren't counting on right at the tail end of the year, like the end of June or early July or whatever from '19.
For regional transportation?
Yeah.
And so now the regional transportation revolving account is for what?
Transportation. If we had increased costs in transportation.
Okay, Mike?
The number, yeah. I know what you're going to tell me. Okay. Okay, so when they first gave us that, when I first received that information, oh, I knew you were going to have this. Grouped in with that number and the last payment that they gave us for regional transportation was McKinney-Vento reimbursement. And so when I went back into the website, they had everything spoken.
Oh, no, McKinney-Vento.
McKinney-Vento is homeless transportation that we are required to pay for as a district and get reimbursed a percentage of it by the state. Another one of the unfunded.
So, so this was updated post of one of the.
Yes, right. And that's why I put up a new slide. I did up the whole. So.
So she did know.
So, so tonight I need a vote from you and I believe the amount is $298,212.
All right, I will move to approve the transfer of excess regional transportation funds from the FY19 year-end in the amount of $298,212 and zero cents to the regional transportation revolving fund.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, Pat.
Superintendent, did you review?
Thank you. So I think we're going to put the slideshow that, from when I had first presented on this. And tonight, the goal, of course, tonight is just to simply give some quick bullets on where we're at with some of the work from the initial goals. I'm going to take one, one goal out of order and put it to the end and I'm going to speak to the others first. I will go through this quite quickly tonight, just because we're already at 8:30. So the first one, and I'll certainly lean on Todd to help go through some, some of the work because he's a little bit more entrenched certainly in, for example, in some of the SEL work that we're doing with the PDs happening and how that's going. This is just to give you a quick, we're going to go through this really quite quickly here, Alita. So this was the first goal and I'll get you to just go to the second goal, please, or the second slide. Great, thank you. So I'm going to just go through some bullets and then, of course, you feel free to ask any questions at the end, okay? And I'm going to do more bullets for the reading and writing workshop and the SEL. The, the actual high school goal with the link to the MSBA, I'm actually going to talk more about that when we go into new business, even though it, it really belongs here. But I want to kind of update you on that and let you know where we're at with that work. And then we'll leave the, the final high school goal to the very end. So when it comes to the, the SEL component, just a couple of key points, just to catch you up to date. This year's focus has been on enhancing adult understanding of social emotional learning competencies. You recall that our focus was really to help support the adults this year with the notion of moving more into classrooms for next year. A number of schools have dedicated their staff meeting time to learning about the five council competencies and how adults and students can be impacted by these competencies. In addition, many of the schools are conducting SEL-related book studies. I don't know if you noticed that Laura, for example, had one tonight that was slated that Ibiya alluded to. So a lot of our, our schools are doing that kind of thing right now. The, the book that they're focusing on right now is on the top topic of adult SEL and using our own social emotional skills to build resilience as teachers in our classrooms. A group of district and school leaders, and I know that you know this, but it's ongoing, has been participating in the XL network. Todd has spoken about that number of times to craft an SEL vision for the district and create an assessment map and learn about the pillars of social emotional learning. Lead teachers will engage and train at the trainer programs this spring. And he's already alluded to the March date that's coming up and there's going to be a lot of that work at that particular workshop. During year two of this initiative, five to six trainers will teach small groups to implement SEL strategies in their academics. The S3 Academy, you've heard Todd speak. The S3 Academy, you've heard Todd speak on that as well. That was a grant that we had received last year, and then we were very fortunate to be able to continue to do the work in that area this year. So the S3 Academy Group of District and School Leaders, Classroom Teachers and Guidance Councils continues to do its work to integrate, to consider social emotional skill development competencies when discussing student strengths and areas of growth. And you'll recall that we had spoken about the fact that the schools were each, our elementary and middle schools were all aligning to submit and implement their own SEL programs. You remember us talking about that early on in the year? So that work is continuing. And you just wrote a, my note here say, remember that our speaker for next year is secret. So we can't share that, but know that the work is.
But solidified.
We are very excited to have that individual come. So that's kind of where we are with the SEL. So basically, the work is ongoing. You can see that it's ongoing. We continue the work for professional development with our Train the Trainer folks, and we're pushing it out, and we're really excited.
The goal, too, is to provide a lot of this at the March PD day, so there'll be some of those Train the Trainer sessions, so that our district faculty can attend them. And we're bringing in people from the outside as well as people on the inside, so that people like you and people in the community can come and participate in those kinds of things and the district initiatives that we're doing, so.
And we have a really nice blend of people from the outside and people from the inside that are doing this work. So it's really exciting work to watch unfold right now. So that just gives you a flavor of that. I'm going to keep going here. So forward thinking about the new high school space and learning environments, I will speak to that when we talk about it in new business, but know that that work is exciting, it's ongoing, it has started. We've had some meetings, and as I say, I'll speak to that a little bit more, so we'll just push forward. I'm going to come back to the next goal after we go through that one. There we are, thanks. So this is the reading and writing workshop, the work has continued, and we're in our final phase of that. And this year, you'll recall that we were really putting the focus on the middle school. You'll recall that we have a department chair, Kim Early, that's coming in that works part-time now for us onsite here. She's phenomenal. I can't wait to have her present for you because we're thrilled with the work that she's doing. I love her energy, she's a visionary, and she sees exactly where we want to go with it.
And she's on that high school team, the visioning team that we're working with Jake Foster on, so.
So it's a beautiful tie-in for us. So for K-5, the K-5 teachers have continued working with literacy consultant. We had two. Right now, we're working with just the one as we wrap this up. Tammy Mulligan to implement the reading and writing workshop and the Lucy Calkins literacy units. This year's PD is being comprised of whole group PD sessions during our early release days and site visits and coaching days at each school, where small groups have worked with Tammy on topics including opinion and informational writing, conferring with groups of children, and conducting interactive read-alikes. For grades six to eight, which you knew that's where our focus was going to be this year, the teachers began working with a teaching and learning alliance this fall to implement the teaching and writing workshop model and the Lucy Calkins literacy units at the middle school. Teachers worked in whole group sessions during PD and early release days, and they've recently learned about creative, effective, creating effective mini lessons and have taught mini lessons during the TLA site visits and coaching days. And I think Kim has been really instrumental in some of this work. She's doing a super job with that as well. The high school teachers have been working with consultant Kate Roberts, author of a novel approach, and this is also something very dear to Kim's heart. And actually, I attended part of one of her sessions to share at the high school. Teachers are working in their job-alike groups to create progressions of reading skills, and these charts will help teachers assess students' reading skills and guide the teacher and student to push the student's thinking to the next level. We also have two additional high school teachers who attended a National Council of Teachers in English Conference in Baltimore in December. And these teachers have shared out new tools, texts, and lessons, and they'll be presenting it in March 6. So again, that's where you can see that our teachers are internally doing some work as well as the outside coming in to help provide professional development. And then additional special educators, literacy specialists, and EL teachers have participated in workshops that help them connect their instruction for intervention to the general classroom work with literacy and the workshop model. So that's, in essence, where, I know these are snapshots, trying to talk quickly, so that's a snapshot of what's going on with this. So then we kind of go back to the final goal. Like I say, I'll speak with regards to the high school, whatever it is, wherever we end up with, either a new building or a major renovation under the old business. So that brings us back to the positive climate outcomes at NRHS. And of course, when you look at what we've been through, you know, since the fall through, obviously, you kind of have to stand, stop, take a look, and say, okay, where are we heading? Can we continue on the pathway that we were continuing on? And so we really took a step back and said, I think we need to think a little bit differently about this. John Doria had come in and started work with the teachers and the administration and the leadership team. We did, we did bring that to a bit of a halt, and we did a bit of a debrief session and a discussion with him in December. And we talked about our concerns at that point in time. He talked about his concerns, whether this was something to continue on right now with, because really, the model that he was bringing is really intended for our high school administration interlinking with our staff, right? That was the whole vision. With that kind of, just not really stopped completely, but halted for the minute, we said we would do a revisit with him in late January and see where we felt the school was at, where the staff was at. So that's where that piece kind of landed. The other pieces that kind of flowed into this was, I know that, for example, you went and met with the PLT, because we've got a student PLT group, and I think Mary, you may have gone too.
No, Elaine.
No, it was just Elaine and Kathy. So that happened. We have also sat down with students as well, as well as teachers. Steve and I were saying yesterday, it was the first broke-free day at the high school since this all went down. And he said to me today, he called, he said, do you realize that yesterday was the first day? And he was right. So, you know, I keep teasing and saying, I might as well have an office up there right now, but because that is where, and we've had that discussion as administrative team, as the principals, and said, this is the focus for this year right now. This is, this is where I need to be spending most of my time. So it isn't going how we had initially planned by any stretch of the imagination. We had to turn a different corner. One of the things that I'm going to have Todd talk about, because we've spoken to students about this, is, you know, what are other things that we can do? What are other things that we can look at? We do have some contractual, I would say obligations, that kind of hold, I would say kind of hold us back a little bit from doing some things that we would like to do. That's not a negative, that's just the reality of where we're at. So we started looking at some different, that's for staff, so we looked, but it would include students. So we started to look at some different things. Do you want to speak for a minute about that?
Sure. I mean, we talk about culture and climate at the high school, and we had a chance to meet, you know, with students, and we've, you know, been brainstorming a variety of ideas. And, you know, we talked about the high school administration a little bit, is a little bit in flux, and, you know, we kind of throwing around ideas around empowering students and really putting groups. I was also in one of the student voice sessions as well and got an opportunity to listen. But, you know, I had, I had, we had an idea to kind of get a group of students together from the high school and really kind of send them out to some schools that are initiating programs that are student voice and, you know, student-based. So for example, you know, I know of a school that has a peer leaders program, and that's really their advisory program, because that program works for that particular school. And it's the juniors and seniors who are really modeling for the freshmen and sophomores who come in and really kind of owning, you know, the mission, the vision of that school. So our idea is really to have some kids research some area schools that they want to go visit and actually talk with other students, because when it's built from the ground up from students, they own it. And you walk into some of those buildings, you know, and you can just feel the vibe, you know, you can feel that, that vision coming from students. So that's one around student leader, student ownership, and really, whether that's advisory or whether, whatever that might look like. We've talked a lot about co-teaching, we're doing a tremendous amount of it at our middle schools, and how and why that can't bleed more into our high school. We certainly have the programming for it. So this, these meetings that we're having with Jake Foster, when he comes in, and we talked a lot about learning space and what that looks like, and we're a little bit, you know, hands are a little bit tied over at that high school, because there isn't a tremendous amount of open space to have those co-taught interdisciplinary classes. And so we're looking at, you know, how to redesign space, or if we were to get new space, a new building, what does that look like? Because we do have some opportunities over there for courses that are supposed to be taught in an interdisciplinary fashion, but you've got one teacher on the third floor and one teacher down in the basement, and it's hard to, it's hard to do that. The work around interdisciplinary, as I mentioned, I've spoken before about the idea of pathways and really making sure that we're college and career ready. I think the design thinking process that Mary Marata has brought in and Melissa Foley Praco, the students talked a lot about those design thinking projects. I think you saw the article in the paper around the library project.
That was, that was fabulous.
That came from our students, so.
Actually, Elaine said that as well.
Yeah. And as I said, Jake's meeting with us tomorrow at 8:30 again, we've got another visiting meeting. He's planning on spending the day at the high school tomorrow. He wants to just spend the day and get a sense of what this culture looks like, what this climate looks like, so he can give more, kind of like a John Doria would do, but he's really going to be spending time with kids and with staff. So those are kind of where, you know, where we're at and kind of shifting gears at the high school.
And next meeting, Grace is going to join us with, with her teacher mentor, Melissa, I didn't even think of it. And she is one of our key writers for the Chieftain Press. And she's got all kinds of ideas of what this could look like. We had, had a couple of meetings with her, phone conversations, and I'm really excited to see what she brings to you next week, or next meeting. So, you know, we talked about student voice, student communication, that kind of thing, and how does this flow? So I think what we're doing is we're really looking where we see opportunities, we're trying to capitalize on them. So that's kind of a broad stroke overview.
And we've got teachers who, and students, we want to get out to other buildings and, you know, to look at what are new and cutting-edge and new building spaces looking like right now. This is kind of.
And we'll talk about that a little bit more when we talk about the MSBA, when we go into that discussion under old business. So that's, that's a broad stroke overview of where we're at.
Any questions for Brooke? Mike?
When those kinds of feedback are provided, will you be able to share that out with us sort of holistically? Like, what is, like, someone comes in and evaluates the culture of the climate, or students provide feedback, is there a way that you can package that and then provide that to us at a meeting? I mean, this could be something for a future agenda item.
You know, it's been fascinating. I mean, absolutely fascinating to listen. And, I mean, those of us in education all know this, children at any age are not afraid to tell you, and you saw that even tonight, speak their minds, speak their hearts, you know? And I don't know how many times we've said in the last couple of weeks, out of the mouths of babes, you know, comes really insightful things. And it has been all over the board, really all over the board as you've, as we've listened to them. So I would say it's gone from like, kind of, one end of the spectrum to the other, wouldn't you say, when you think about it? But I think that to give you a broad stroke overview of the kinds of things, like, we've taken notes at these meetings and such, so, yeah, we can certainly share out some of the things that we've heard, even though they're polarized. But, but it also shows you, I mean, when I think of, I don't think of that in a negative way at all, because it's kind of like when we sit around this table, it's like every one of you brings drinks to this table. I know that, you know? And we don't always have to agree, it's okay to disagree. And I think that that's what we really see with our students right now, too, you know?
I would, I would just echo too, that, like, you saw, like, the middle school kids came in today, and you could tell that they trusted their teacher, or the video you saw, there was this element of trust with the teacher that was in the room. I will say, when we met with the high school students, we asked Tanya to help us, and she helped, you know, select some students that would meet with us, because going in to meet with the superintendent or assistant superintendent is probably not just, you know, a whim, but Tanya helped facilitate that. I remember saying to you, these kids were so open and frank with us and shared so much with us because they trust Tanya. And so I said, this is a model where as we have those kinds of relationships, we build those kind of programs in the high school where there are those staff members that kids trust, they so easily open, openly share. And so I remember Tanya had set that up and met with each individual student before them coming to meet with us, and you could just tell. And she stayed in the room for part of the time with them. And you could just sell a level of trust with her, which allowed them to be so comfortable with us.
I think following along that too, Mike, to your question, I mean, the discussions I have with the staff, to be honest with you, most of those are pretty, pretty confidential, to be honest with you. I would, I would feel that I would be betraying their trust if I put out some of the things that they've shared, to be honest with you. So I would probably be a little bit more hesitant with some of what's been shared with me with staff. But I would tell you that they have, like, I remember that one, one particular meeting where somebody said, they probably won't say much. That couldn't have been further from the truth. They had much to say, you know? And very, very positive and insightful and just really, really, so articulate, so articulate. But I would tell you, the staff, don't hesitate to share either. Don't, don't hesitate at all. And it's been interesting, especially, you know, when I think to, you know, let's say, maybe late October, early November, and where we were at then versus like, middle of December versus like now, you know? And you can, you can see a definite, definite change, like, you just can, and positively, you know? So, so I guess I would say, yes, I would certainly report some, some things out to give a flavor, but, but probably not all things, because I think some of it's just far too personal.
Sure.
Other questions?
I was actually going to ask a question about trust, so that was a good segue. I think it's safe to say that trust was broken in a lot of different places. So what are some of the specific things that you're doing to kind of rebuild trust between all the different groups? There's students and teachers, there's teachers and administration, there's students and administration, sort of, all around, even the broader community?
I don't think I can speak to the broader community right now. I mean, I think that we're really, our, our focus right now is at high school. Like, really, that's, almost every day, that's our focus, you know? So I think that, I don't know that I can say that there are really specific pieces, like, when we talk about Jake Foster, of course, that's one piece, right? And that was something, quite frankly, we'd planned that long before, before January. I mean, we'd planned that back in the summer, you know? And it just came into play, and it just happens that the work that he's doing is really work that we need beyond, beyond the obvious building component, you know?
I think that, like, through this fall, too, we've done a lot of unpacking first, you know?
Definitely.
And it took us a while to finally say, you know what? That school needs kind of like a dean. And the gentleman that we put in that position has great relationships with students in that building, and that's been a fantastic match so far.
Yeah, and you're absolutely right. Actually, that was even, I mean, this, this isn't really what you're asking, but it kind of ties in with what you're asking, no different than Patrick Perkins' piece, you know? And so when we reached out to Patrick, it was because he was a seasoned administrator in this district as principal and assistant principal for years and years, I mean, most of his career is here.
He's retired and he's still working for us.
He's still working for us. And truthfully, we had already kept him on anyway, because when you talk about trust, Patrick was somebody we felt we could trust. And so we had some areas inside of the central office, for example, that we needed somebody that we felt could be really trustworthy to deal with some of the, some of the things that he's since taken on. He was the perfect fit for us. When we looked at Hale, you know, Kyle had come forward and he, he knew that Patrick was the person that he wanted over there. So we knew that Patrick already had a relationship with, with students over there. And so for us, even though he didn't have the qualification for 10 to 12, he had it to nine. And we looked, we sat down at the central office, and Ray and I, and with Patrick, and said, okay, all it's going to take is one, one test for you to get this deck, like, just go out and write it, and we'll be, we'll be done with this. And so we knew that. We even had conversations with DESE on this, you know? So they knew, they knew what we were doing. So that, for us, was a fit of the puzzle. We, and I've said this before, around this table was a different committee, but I've always felt that that, that particular building in this particular era needed more administration than it had. And so when the notion of having a dean of students there that could just help with discipline, we knew that that person didn't need certification beyond what they already had. So, and we were looking for somebody that we felt could relate really well with kids and who already had trust relationships built, which is exactly what he said. So when Jamie's name came up. So when Jamie's name came up, it was like, yes, you know what? That, that makes a lot of good sense. Steve fitting into that picture was also very purposeful. Because he's been there for 28 years. Steve Coling, you met tonight, 28 years he's been in that school. He knows every pocket, every hole, every, everything good, everything bad. He knows, he knows that building inside out. And I remember the first time I talked to him and, and about the possibility of him stepping into this position. And he said, well, he said, I, I don't know that this is what I meant for. But if you think I can do it and you can help to support, I'm willing to try it. And I would tell you, I think he's doing a fantastic job, you know? And it hasn't been easy, because we've had a, a couple of really serious discipline things happen in the last four weeks, you know? So it was definitely, you know, baptism by fire for him. But he knew, he knew most of his parents, he knew the kids inside out. He has such a passion for kids. We, we had minimal issues with that whole process. But I would also say, for example, when, I, I can't remember what it was that we were working on. And the whole team sat around the table, like, I mean, Jamie was there, I was there, Joan, Joan was in and out. We called Joan in on a couple of occasions. Jamie was there, Tanya was there, Patrick was there. We would call Patrick at Hale and say, we need you at the high school right now. And we would all sit around the table and we would work through the situation. So it was really nice to see that team, that administrative team, work as a team. The fact that they trust each other, I think, was incredibly helpful. So it's rebuilt. There's no two ways about it. It's just, it's just a rebuild right now. And I think that we're doing the best we can with it.
And we're making March, March sixth too. We're trying to include, incorporate a lot of that into the March six PD sessions. Like we have Restorative Justice Coming, which is a big program around healing after, you know? We've got mindfulness in the age of digital distraction, healthy balance. You know, we've got a lot of those kinds of sessions coming up in March as well, so that teachers have that full day to take opportunity of what they want to take opportunity.
And add to their tool bag.
Yeah.
You know, their toolkit. So that's a general idea of where we're at.
Other questions? Leah?
So perhaps it is because of the disruption administration that, like you said, pause is kind of where we are right now in rebuilding. I know that I've had a lot of constituents reach out to me. And there was a good deal of online conversation regarding, maybe this is just a future agenda item, but regarding drug use at the high school and where we are with that.
I'm, I'm happy to speak to that now, actually, if, if, if you'd like to.
Yeah, sure.
So we have had, and I said to Steve, I said, this is not something we're shoving under the carpet. This has happened. And I, I have grave concerns, in particular because of the, the ages of these, these kids. And when you're caught selling drugs, and I'm, I, I want to put this out there. I'm glad you brought it up, because I think, I think sometimes we get as a culture, maybe lax in areas that we should never become lax in. And we need to pay attention to the handbook, which says, these are the potential consequences. Because that's what we go back to. That is, that, that is like the school's foundational document. And, you know, you tie that into the criminal element. Like our element is separate from the criminal element. And we've seen that now this year on a couple of different fronts. So we've, we've got no say in whatever that criminal element is or whatever that criminal consequence is. But we do have some things in the, the school district that's laid out very clearly in the handbook. And for example, like there, there are certain programs that if you, if you're caught doing anything like this, you will be removed. It, it says so right there. So it's, please don't come and ask me to reinstate the child. It, it's clearly laid out there, you know? And so the, the message to our, our students is if, if you're buying or you're selling, expect the consequence. Because what you do, if you are in that type of transaction, you are putting other students potentially at risk as well. And, and so I feel that we have to take a strong stand on this. And so I, I said to Steve when it happened, I mean, I, I'm not happy that it happened. But we will take this as an opportunity to say, okay, let's revisit what, what the school and the district will do in terms of consequences here. And like I say, I know Joan, Joan's here. And she sat in on a number of those meetings as well. And, and, and it was from her PPS hat, not just the SPED hat. But she brought a lot to that table too. And, and again, she has full certification, a K to 12, you know? So, and because both she and I have served as principals, we know what we've done in, in our past lives for this kind of thing. So I think that we carry that forward. And I would say that 95% of the parents that we're dealing with right now, who have these children, have been more than outstanding to work with, more than outstanding. They have taken and had their child take the responsibility and said, what you've done here is, is wrong. It's, you can't do, we've got to set up council, we've got to do. I mean, they've done everything that they've needed to do. Where I'm going to struggle with in the next couple of weeks here is with the, the appeals to the superintendent. Because two of these are very long-term suspensions. And the notion of keeping children out of school for such a long time, as an educator, I struggle with, because you know that they, they need the education in that building. We know that there are other ways that they can get their education, we support that. But there is a piece of you, I'm just saying, I don't have so much problem struggling with the short term. It's the long term. But I, I feel very strongly that if we don't do exactly what that handbook says, then why do we have the handbook? So that's, you know, and I think we, we do it right here, right now. We, these kids have been caught clearly. I will give a number of the kids, I would say, maybe 90% of the kids have fessed up right away and said, I did wrong, this is what I did, here's what I've got. Here, I mean, I would tell you, 90% of those students were outstanding to deal with, outstanding to deal with. And I think that they deserve a lot of credit. And the kids that pointed out other confessions, they deserve all the credit in the world. I think our, some of our students were so mature with how they dealt with it, but they knew it was wrong. So, so I guess, I guess that kind of gives you, do, do I think that this is widespread? No. I think, I think players were in the right place at the right time and called it for what it was, right there. And as I said earlier, we're not showing this under the carpet. This happened not once, but twice. And here's where we're at, and here's what we're doing.
So I think it's amazing what you guys are doing on that end. It's great. Nishoba High School is not the only high school dealing with this kind of prolific drug use at this age. So what I would say is, I see a lot of program, programmatic approaches for K to eight. And I think that we oftentimes kind of lose our way in how to help nine through 12. And so the kids who I'm wondering about are the, you know, 1,100 kids who weren't caught doing something wrong.
Right.
And what we're doing for those kids in managing the culture of a school where some kids were just caught doing something really bad and harmful, how can we create maybe student groundswell to combat this from, you know, them?
It is, I think it's a great question. And I think too, you know, we've had this discussion around the administrative table too. I think there's a, there are a couple of things at play. There's, and this really gets to what you're thinking, I think what you're thinking. There's the leadership and there's the management piece, right? There's, there are pieces here, and then there's that cultural component, right? And we have to look at all of that. The management really is what, what's the discipline? Like that's the cut and dried stuff. The leadership is taking a look and saying, okay, for example, and I appreciate what you're saying, but it's not lost on me the number of grade nines that are involved in this particular, this last one. And so then I have to go back and say to our nurse leader, for example, I think we need to bump something up at that middle school, because something's being lost there. So I think we're looking at more, a little bit broader than just even the high school level right now.
Any other questions for Brooke?
Thank you, Brooke. And I know it's, it's a tough, it's a tough topic, but I would echo what Leah said. This is not unique to Nishoba.
It's not.
And it's something that I, I think that to, to, to your point, that kids have to realize how serious it is, and it is breaking the law and.
It's not a joke.
But to, to Leah's point, what are the things we can put in place to support the kids who, who are not inclined to that? But how do you make, I, I think of the DARE program, and I know that's not in vogue anymore. But it's just the idea that you learn to say no, you learn to discourage. And I'm thinking about the, the program that Tom was talking about in terms of the peer leaders. Because kids influence other kids. And it's good for a kid through the course of the day, a freshman, to have a junior that they connect with and look up to. So if these are things that we're going to look into and hopefully implement in the future, I think those are all really positive. So thank you, and thanks for the thoughtful conversation.
The other thing I mentioned too, one of the things that impressed me when we're talking to our kids is our grade 12 students, who, by the way, one of the great gifts, I mean, as weird as this sounds, one of the great gifts of meeting with students is they stay in touch with you after, right? So I get emails now from them, you know? Hey, I'm out there, do you want to come see me? Well, you know, which is, which is fine. But one of the things I really respected was from our grade 12 students, who said, we want to do some things now for the younger kids. What does that look like? So taking that level of responsibility culturally, I thought was really impressive. It is such a great high school. We just cannot ever lose sight of that. Thank you.
Okay?
Oh, MSBA is, Mike, I'm next.
Well, I was just going to say that. You go ahead.
Okay, MSBA. I'm going to try to keep this really quick. I'm so sorry, folks. So.
This is my night out, I'm having a good time.
So I've got something that we're going to put up here. Actually, what I think I'm going to focus on, Alita, is the letter. If you can put that letter up. So I just want to revisit a couple of things and kind of zone in on a couple of things. So we are in an eligibility period right now. I want to stress again, we don't know whether we're looking at a new building or modernization. I have no idea what that looks like. And it's really our community's decision, right? It isn't super's, it's not the school committee. It's the community's decision to decide what they want. And so we, we start off with this piece. And in the eligibility period, we are able to think about funding the feasibility study, but we can't do it. So, and if you think about it, it makes sense that, that, that piece is there. And we were asked about this the other night at Trytown. And so I, I wasn't sure, and I said I needed to go back for clarification. So I reached back out to Brittany Gomes, who is our new contact with, with the MSBA. And she's the one who sent this letter. And when we opened it, I just want to review a couple of pieces of that letter. Chris is not going to open quickly tonight. It's tired.
Yeah, it's down there.
It's right here.
There you go, it's down there, it's just not opening.
I'm going to read some of it while she's working at getting, so that we're not sitting here for five or 10 minutes unnecessarily. So I just want to revisit, the invitation into the eligibility period is not an invitation to the feasibility study, right? So they're separate things, but we can queue ourselves up and get ourselves ready. And that's exactly what we were going to do, whether we got queued up or not, right? Which is why we, we talked to Jake way back in the summer about starting his process in, in January. So that's the first piece. But what we can do is get our ducks in a row and be all set. And then when the MSBA takes their vote to tell us we can do the feasibility study, we're all set. So that's a piece. The other piece is that we don't really start working with MSBA until July, was it July 1st or June 1st? It's, I think it's June 1st, 2020. And it is June 1st, 2020. And it's because these 11 projects are all staggered, right? Of the 61 that applied and the 11 that got in, they're all staggered at different points in time. Our starts June, June 1st. So there's a 270-day time period thereafter that kicks in effect of that June 1st, 2020. And there's, there's work inside of these modules. And there are dates that you have to get these things all done. But I think there might be eight or so of them. And so we'll have to do that. But we have until February 26, 2021, to have that funding basically in, in place. To say, yes, we've taken the vote with our communities, we're ready to go, and then we can push go. So in meeting with our town managers the other day, we talked, and this was from their perspective, which may not be your perspective, so I'm not trying to influence this at all. But they said, why don't we do the vote at the, the next town meeting in the spring? Why don't we put that out there? We're not borrowing right now, we're not, we're not doing anything. We're just saying, yes, we're ready, so that when MSBA takes their feasibility study vote, we're, we're set to go. So we're going to have to do something like that between now and February anyway. So they said, why don't we put it on the warrant right now? It's, the language is very specific, the language will come from MSBA, and that's what the article will look like, and they're well aware of that as well. So that was their suggestion. My thinking, but now I'm rethinking it. My thinking at the time was, or do we give ourselves the opportunity to really talk about this before we take it to a vote? Do we give the, the high school the opportunity to have some really good discussion with Jake over the next couple of months and see where that takes us? And then for the fall vote, you know, the, the fall town, special town meetings? But then they said, not all of them are flying on a, a special town meeting this year. So then that puts us to the next year, and then that's up to the date. So if, 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 for example, this, this vote was taken in May, and let's say, for example, it didn't, didn't fly. Well, that would still give us opportunities to come back, regroup and say, okay, how, how else can we do this? What else do we want to do? Because there'll be other options for us at that time. And MSBA will help to walk us through that, if, if that happens. But quite frankly, the, the town, town administrators said, you know, we think the communities are, this is not a surprise to anyone. We think that they'll be supportive of it. We would tell you that you might want to think about doing it at the next meeting. So I bring that to you tonight. I don't have an amount, I'm not asking you to take a vote. And when I checked with Brittany, I don't need a vote, I just need direction from you to, to go. But I don't, what I don't have tonight is to say, it'll be 1.2 million or 1.1 million or whatever. I will work with Brittany, who's got the seasoning in this at MSBA, and she'll come back and say, for a building around this size or what, you probably need this type of money. So I would bring that to the January 29th meeting and say, here is the amount that MSBA recommends that we go forward to request from our communities. We would look at doing a borrowing, in essence. And, and my understanding, but please don't take this to the bank or any bank right now, is that, you know, I, I would assume that the money, the first payment probably wouldn't happen until the year thereafter, right? Just no different than where we sit right now with Leach Field Oil Tank. And then that kind of gives you the opportunity to be planful, and our towns to be planful of what that first payment looks like. But then eventually, of course, it all ties back in with a project. So it's going to need that money upfront to get us kickstarted into this.
Steve?
Do all three towns have to say yes? Or if we have a problem, can we do the nuclear option or, you know? I'm just asking.
I probably wouldn't have gone there tonight, but to be honest with you, 16N is an option for us. Because it's borrowing, my understanding would be that it would have to be all three communities. But 16N is out there, we know that.
Mia?
So this wouldn't be considered beginning a process before the June 1st?
No.
So it's okay?
I mean, sure. Because I'm so petrified that we stay exactly as MSBA wants us to. No, and, and I, I have the paper trail that says that. That says, you know, you can go out to get, get organized to do the borrowing now.
Yeah, just so I'm clear on mechanics here, just so I understand. You're talking about another warrant article on town meeting warrants this spring, seeking authority for the district to once again go out and borrow for this project?
For the feasibility study.
For the feasibility study.
Yeah, just for the feasibility study, not for the project itself. Just feasibility study.
And roughly, what would that be?
I'm assuming, because we've had the numbers bantered about, about 1.1, 1.2 million is, are the, that's the number that's been bantered about. I don't know, as I sit here tonight, I will know on January 29th.
That's total, not for each town, right?
No, that's total. No, that's total.
Okay. So one last question. You said you broached the subject with the town administrator? Okay, all three?
All three.
Okay. And they suggested that...
They did.
Okay.
Can you finish your sentence? I'm sorry.
No, no, she's, we're on the same wavelength. She knows exactly where you're going.
I know where he's going, yeah.
So I just want to be clear.
Yes.
And I just, so when you say all three, you're including the town of Lancaster...
Orlando. Orlando sat to my right. Don Lo sat across from me. Bill Wrigley sat to my left, and I sat at...
All right. I got to go get my Kevlar so...
We'll be prepared, Joe.
All right. I'm ready for it. I'm ready.
So this is just information for us today?
Tonight is just information. I know that I'll come back on January 29. And I think, I just wanted to put it out there so that I didn't want to do a, "Let's put it out there and tell me yes tonight." I wanted you to go back and think about it. And, you know, as Steve said, there will be other options if this doesn't fly. But I'm hoping that's not the case.
Right. Okay. And we will all be prepared to present at town meeting when the occasion arises.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Leah?
Mechanical question, too. When is, what's the deadline for getting something onto the, or creating...
Yeah, well, again, they've, when our town administrators start this process, they start to put placeholders in. And so right now, there's a placeholder for it. And so we'll come back now in with the specifics, and it's generally around late March, I think, when it has to be all, I mean, they've got a placeholder in there for our budget right now, for example. They've got an amount. It's not the real amount, but they've got a placeholder in there of a ballpark of what it is.
Okay.
Can I? Can I have one suggestion?
Of course.
If we're going to do this again this year? Just a suggestion, and I'm saying it for you specifically and generally for the, I'm just from the other towns. I think it would behoove us, if we're going to do this, that we do a preliminary presentation in front of our select boards prior to each town meeting. Therefore, you know, that way, when we get to town meeting, you'll have a select board and administrator who knows exactly what we're doing and exactly what, because I think our big problem last year was that I'm not sure the select board and the FinCon were completely, you know...
And I wasn't as prepared as I should have.
No, 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 nobody's, no, no, no. I just, I, you know, I just...
I know what you're saying. And I think that, I think that's a good idea.
And if, yeah. And we, to be honest with you, we would have done that anyway, because we do go around, I mean, we're getting lined up now with our meetings for our FinComs and all the other groups that we go around to meet with.
I know you get sick of me saying it, because like you do things different here in this area. And I just, I know you get sick of me saying it, but it would, I feel in my, again, we all bring our own experiences. And my experience tells me that if you have the select board's and the FinCon's approval and recommendation, it goes a long way to securing approvals.
Actually, in some towns, when these warrant articles come up, they actually say the FinCon recommends, the select board recommends. They don't do that in these towns, but I've seen it done in other towns.
Still does that.
FinCon does, yeah.
Okay, so we don't do that.
No, but as we discussed, there's reasons for it, there's compelling reasons why you don't put that on there, because people will take the position that, especially the proponents of the article, that the select board in Lancaster says, "No, we don't approve that." Again, it works against us. So some people like to keep it neutral until you get to the town meeting.
Sure. But I would agree with you, and that's probably, to be honest with you, Joe, that's probably one of the reasons why I was thinking, can we push it out a little bit so that, so that nobody felt pushed?
Yeah.
But I respect, I respect what they bring to the table, and I think they've got a pulse on their abilities.
Okay. I'm getting excited now for Tommy.
Me, too.
Okay. Are we ready to move?
Your husband, this is your life.
Well, my husband sleeps in bed at 7:30 at night, and when I was, when we were looking...
He's been in bed for an hour and...
He has. But when we were looking for another Lancaster rep, I said, "You could be it." He said, "Well, the meetings would have to start at 4. They have to be over by 7, and I get to say whatever I want." And I don't think it would be interesting to view on television, but I don't think he could meet the high standards that we have set in terms of discourse. He said, "Let's move on." So we're ready for our subcommittee reports? Mr. Rubenstein?
I really have no report tonight. We don't even have a preliminary budget, except, you know, some strange number. We did have our session on the 18th of December...
Yes.
Where we went over some of the concepts and some of the ideas, some of the things of the, of how the process works.
Yeah.
And my only, my only hope is that when they bring in their first budget, that's what it is. We don't have to spend time for meetings and meetings.
I would love that.
That would be wonderful.
Yes.
Yes.
Hold that thought.
Thank you.
Thank you. Personnel?
Personnel met on January the 8th, where we took our first deep dive into the communication plan. I believe we're going to meet once again just as a committee and then invite the superintendent to join us to go into further detail about sort of our mutual perspectives.
Okay. Thank you. Policy?
Okay, so the policy subcommittee met on January 6. We have a few things here to share out with you guys. So we're excited that MASC is in possession now of all of our policies. We're waiting on that. We also had a pretty detailed conversation around our policy regarding student voice. And Kathy and I are going to investigate ways that we can kind of renovate the way that students are represented on this committee, maybe interfacing with the student leadership apparatus at the high school, and how we can best represent the students here at the school committee level and hear from them. We also are considering, we started a preliminary conversation around policies regarding curricula and how we can interface there. And then we also have religious holiday observance protocols in our sites and how the school calendar can represent those diverse observances.
Okay. Thank you. CPAC events. So there are some upcoming CPAC events. February 2nd, there will be a parent social at Slater's in Bolton from 5 to 8 p.m. And then these are events scheduled for the next few months, and the dates and times will be deter, still to be determined. So in February, there will be a presentation, it's a movie about autism, and it's called Life Animated. In March, there's a presentation about transition planning, and I would imagine that's from the middle school to high school. And a second presentation will be either about dyslexia or executive functioning. In April, there is a presentation entitled Screenagers, and that's a movie.
Very good.
And then...
Very good.
Very good.
In May, a meeting and social, the business meeting, and bowling night. So that sounds exciting, and we will share with you the dates and times as we learn what they are. Okay. So let's see, consent agenda.
All right. I move to approve the consent agenda of January 15, 2020, containing the warrants of January 17, 2020, and the meeting minutes of December 18, 2019.
Second.
All in favor? Post? Abstained? Abstained? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Person who wasn't at the meeting.
Okay. Thank you. So one abstained?
Yeah.
All right. Items to be considered for next and/or future agendas. The special education, it'd be nice to hear from Kyle and Ross about their programs. If I'm looking at the parking lot just real quick, the regional agreement will be the 29th of January. So school calendar evaluation, that just went out, and we'll need to get the report in about that. We did the preschool and extended day review, so you can cross that out. So discussion on school committee policy and responding to constituents, that's something we still have to discuss. Building rental rates for a future agenda. Student voice will be ongoing, but it's for a future agenda. And then the college report card. So those are the things in the parking lot, some of which we ticked off and others we will, like I said, I will get a sense what our priorities are in terms of scheduling them. Shh, yeah, I see. Sorry.
Just being helpful.
You are always very helpful. Don't forget, we have our budget workshop on January 25. We start at 8 o'clock, and there are always food and beverages right here. Food and beverages for us. And then the WCSA, what is that?
That's the Worcester County Superintendent's Room table. And we had, we have our annual scholar luncheon, and Walter was our scholar that year. Fabulous young man, and so we always recognize him at our meeting. So he'll come in just for a few minutes, just to be recognized and acknowledged.
Okay. And we have the business manager report, extended day camp update, employee insurance update, and an update, is it a presentation on vaping or an update, or what do we do on vaping?
You know what? I'm going to have to check with Lisa on that, to be honest with you, because I'm not sure what her thinking was on that.
And just to reiterate, Mary will be doing the presentation on the regional agreement.
I have that down.
Okay, great.